6:00 PM and this is our business meeting for the school district of Indian River County. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. All right, the first item that we have, board members, before I call that first item, which is the adoption of the orders of the day, I'm going to make an announcement about two changes I'd like to do. One is that we do not have the Pledge of Allegiance on this agenda because we already did it earlier. However, I'd like to add a Pledge of Allegiance, especially in honor of Veterans Day this past week. The other item that I'd like to add as part of our business meeting is after all of the presentations, if we take a short break to allow people that would like to leave to leave so that the board is not speaking over the top of all the movement of the motion. If board members are okay with that? All right, thank you. I appreciate that. No opportunity to vote on that. Okay, so I'm going to ask for adopt the orders of the day. Are there any board items board members wish to move from consent to action? All right, seeing none, then I'm going to call for a motion. Could I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Mrs. Rosario?
Second.
Dr. Jones for the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass is 5-0. All right, I would like to recognize Dr. Moore for a series of presentations. Before we do that though, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Can we all stand? I'd like to ask, because it is, one of our proclamations tonight is for Suzanne DeGressa, who is our attorney, who has served us faithfully and is going to be retiring, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, board members, are there any items board members wish to move from consent to agenda? We did that, thank you. All right, number one, we are going to do our presentations. Dr. Moore, would you like to announce their presentation?
Absolutely. We will start with high impact grants through the Ed Foundation and our public information officer, Ms. Maddox, will present that item.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We have a full house. Our first presentation is our schools who receive the high impact grants from the Education Foundation. And I know we have Mr. Heron here along with some other members of the board, but I'm going to call Ms. Cindy Emerson up to go ahead and introduce them and tell you a little bit more about these grants. Ms. Emerson?
She's writing a grant.
Is Ms. Emerson in the room? We had her here. She was here earlier.
She was carrying a sign.
There she is.
Hi, they just turned streaming.
All right.
That's the delay.
We are incredibly fortunate to have such strong partnerships throughout school district of Indian River County, including the Education Foundation. At this time, I would like to bring up Doug Heron, Executive Director, along with their board, to present the high impact grant presentations for this year.
Better wait for the delay.
There he is.
Congratulations, Doug.
It's a bag of goodies. Good evening.
We are so excited to be here this evening to present the checks for our 2021, 2022 High Impact Grant recipients. And I would real quickly like to recognize my board. We couldn't do any of this, or I couldn't do any of what I do for the school district without their support. So our President, Bill Douglas, they're kind of lined up against the back wall there. Lee Moore, Ms. Lee Moore, Ms. Helen Millman, and Mr. Ben Keel are with us this evening. So thank you very much. This is my second year with the High Impact Grants Program, and I purposely, when I begin as the Executive Director at the Education Foundation, I purposely involved the school district more in the process, invited Ms. Emerson to participate in the selection process with us, because my goal was to ensure that we were awarding grants for projects that were going to fit into the school district strategic plan, that was going to help the school district move forward in the direction that they needed to go. And I think, Cindy, we've done that. I think we even got a little bit better at that this year. So I'm real excited. We are awarding 11 grants this year, slightly less money, if you're keeping track of that, but more schools. And I'm also excited because for the first year that I'm aware of, one of our charter schools participated and received a grant. So I'm going to start with the schools, and I will let you know the schools and the recipient, the author of the grant, and the title of their project, and the amount of the award. That's the most important part. We start with Gifford Middle School. Daniel Greenwood, the band director, wrote a grant application for a project entitled Fundamental Transfers: Connecting Academic Dots with Drum Lines. And if you want to see how music and the arts can be connected to academics, I suggest you have a conversation with Daniel. And he can... I will, I'm going to pause for just a second because this is, I think, interesting. We start our grant process by the teachers submitting applications to us, and sometimes when you read a written application, I've been guilty of myself, you don't include everything you need to include in there. So, and that's why we purposely have a second stage, which is an interview and a presentation, a face-to-face presentation, well, a Zoom presentation in our time, but the same thing. So after we heard Daniel's presentation, we were like, oh, my gosh, Daniel, if we hadn't have heard you speak to us, I'm not sure we would have approved the grant. So one thing we did was, could you please retitle it? Because it really is touching on academics. And he went back and retitled his project name to something that was much more fitting and was accomplishing what he wanted to accomplish. So congratulations, Daniel. Next, we have Indian River Academy. Ms. Amy DiAlbora, and her project title was Limitless Ingenuity Building Capacity. And her grant award was for $9,219.39. Congratulations, Amy. And I got so excited with Daniel, I forgot to let you know, his grant award was $8,039.10. Next, we have Indian River Charter High School, Leif Mietis, who wrote a grant project titled Indian River Charter High School Garden Project. And kind of in a similar grain to Daniel's, he tied a gardening project to academics in a deep and meaningful way. His award is for $2,544.53. Next, we have Liberty Magnet School, Ms. Sherry St. Petrie, grant project titled IB Drummin. And her award was for $2,881.54. From Osceola Magnet School, we have Janine Jones. Her project title was Think This Through: Building Thinking Classrooms. Her award was for $8,097.47. From Rosewood Magnet School, we had Ms. Julie Carroll. She couldn't be with us this evening, but her principal, Adam Faust, is representing her. Her project was titled Rosewood Steam Echo Rangers: Innovative Community Advocates. Her award was for $5,436.85. Next, we have a regular to the High Impact Grants process, Garrett Rue from Sebastian River High School. And his project was titled Automotive Electrical Trainers 3.0. Garrett's a three-peat performer with the High Impact Grants. His award was for $6,576. From Storm Grove Middle School, Ms. Melissa Sleeper. Her project was entitled Dive Deep and Soar High: A Steam Enrichment Project. Her award was for $4,526.38. From Vero Beach Elementary School, Ms. Kaitlin O'Neil, wrote a proposal titled Vero Beach Elementary Student Scientist Help Save the Indian River Lagoon.
Yes.
And her award was for $2,100. So she's very efficient. She's saving the lagoon and is not spending much money doing it. We're looking forward to maybe seeing us add on to that next year. From Vero Beach High School, Ms. Amber Sentence, wrote a proposal titled BBHS: Access Transition Program Enterprise: Spirit Shop. Her grant award was for $1,000. And last but not least, from Obasso School, Mr. Christopher Kohlstedt, wrote a grant proposal titled Learning to Live. His award was for $6,608. If you're a savant and are adding those numbers up in your head, you'll know that it was $57,029.17 Now, to the board, I would recommend you schedule a time to visit the schools. I did that last year, and you'll see the grants in action. The teachers really do put their heart... The money's one thing, but they put their heart and their soul into it, so that's really what makes it effective. So really, when you think of it that way, we're doing the easy part. So congratulations to each of our grant recipients. I really can't wait until next year and see some of the things you submit to us in the process next year. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, before we... Before Ms. Maddox organizes us to take a picture, I think it would be great if we can get the board for the Ed Foundation to come in and be a part of this picture. As they come up, I just want to thank Doug and the board for fully aligning your support to our district strategic plan, and that is powerful. And this is an organization that understands the importance of public education and is working hard to support our district strategic plan. And what you see here is a very specific initiative to fund the creative, innovative things teachers are doing in our classrooms, and it helps them bring to life wonderful things that are happening in our schools. So thank you, Doug. Thank you, board, for all of your commitment and support for our school and our children. Thank you.
And if you guys, if we can just get together as much as possible, we might have to make like a second, third row.
I'll make sure you get it.
Okay, all right, everyone, one, two, and three. One more. One, two, and...
Somebody's dad.
Good? Good? Thank you. Congratulations.
And as they clear the room, we will set up our next presentation, and I think I have completely lost Ms. Maddox, but this is an opportunity for us now.
Hold on one sec.
All right, so our next presentation, it is an absolute honor and privilege for us to take pause and honor this year's Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year. So to set this up, Ms. Maddox, we'll take it from here.
This year, we asked our principals and our assistant principals to nominate and vote for the person that they thought deserved the title of Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year. I'm very happy to say that our Principal of the Year is Mr. Sean O'Keefe, and he's here with us tonight. Mr. O'Keefe? And our Assistant Principal of the Year from Oslo Middle School is Mr. Craig Kinsley, and he is also... So now, we have a short video created of the day that we went out, and we surprised them, and we hope that you enjoyed it as much as we enjoyed making it.
So long overdue, selected by your peers, we couldn't be any prouder that Sean O'Keefe is the school district of Indian River County's Principal of the Year for 2022. district of Indian River County's Assistant Principal of the Year for the entire school district. Give it up for him.
And I can tell you by the nominations that we received that they are both very loved and appreciated by their peers. So congratulations again.
So if we could have Mr. O'Keefe come on up, Mr. Kinsley, come on up. I do want to acknowledge our outgoing Principal of the Year, Ms. Garcia, who is in the room. I don't want to put any pressure on either of you two gentlemen, but when she came to the same ceremony last year, she literally ran around the room cheering.
I know.
I guess not. Just want to throw it out there, see what would happen. But two absolutely outstanding gentlemen who are really advocates for children and so excited for them. We're going to have a number of times throughout the year to celebrate the impact that you have on children, but we'll just get one quick picture. Congratulations, as I said in the video, long overdue.
Congratulations.
After watching that video, I want to stand behind this chair.
All right, everyone, one, two, and three. One more. One, two, and... Thank you very much.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Tonight, we have a very special charity in the house with us, Little Birthday Angels. And Angel Peach, are you here tonight? Come on up, please. And Lynn Kiefer. So our district decided this year that we needed to revamp the Casual for a Cause calendar and go local. So we took different recommendations from different schools and principals and leadership and selected organizations that were all near and dear to our hearts. And Little Birthday Angels is one of them. And for Casual for a Cause, last month, we raised $3,741 for Little Birthday Angels. We do give them a real check. This is just for show. And would you ladies like to share a little bit about your organization?
Lynn's our board chair.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the board for everything that y'all do for us. I want to first acknowledge Ms. Steinburgen and Ms. Mickett, who we work with very closely. You have two jewels in the crown in your district with those two ladies. They love and care for these children so much, and you can just see their heart in everything that they do. So I wanted to acknowledge them first and foremost. Keep those jewels. But Little Birthday Angels, we give... We celebrate homeless children's birthdays. Children that have been registered with the school district under the McKinney-Vento Act, we get their names, and we try to love on them on their birthdays. They get a large duffel bag full of essential items as well as wish list items to make their birthday special. And we have had children... We serve Indian River County schools. We also serve several shelters here in the county. And we have had 16-year-old children tell their counselors that they've never had a birthday celebration until they got our bag. We have had children break down in tears because they lost a family, a mother or a family member, and ended up being homeless, and this gift, they said, now I know I'm loved. And so that's what we are trying to do. That's what Little Birthday Angels does. And our essential items include blankets and water bottles and socks and stuffed animals, because they all love those little stuffed animals. It includes a Bible and a devotional. It includes...
Sneakers?
What?
Sneakers.
Sneakers and an outfit, and then a whole bunch of wish list items. So we go out and we get their wish list, and we try to fulfill those wishes. So thank you again. This is so helpful for our mission. Thank you.
Baby, how are you?
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to our students, teachers, and staff members who donated for a casual day. I'm sure everyone enjoyed that. Who was able to attend the superintendent's art gallery? Anyone in the room, raise your hand if you were there. It was probably my favorite art gallery of all years. We had it at the Center for the Arts this year. We are partners with them, and they've supported us just immensely. For the kids to have their arts on display at the Center for the Arts, like they were real artists right alongside, you know, professional artists, it was just amazing to see them light up. So we have a short video that kind of covers the superintendent's art gallery and the 117 pieces of student artwork that were displayed.
And go ahead.
Today, we are at the superintendent's art gallery. It's a prestigious show of all of the artwork from our students across Indian River County. This collaboration is with different schools within Indian River County. We have charter schools, our traditional public schools, virtual school students participating in this event. We have approximately 120 pieces of art to showcase for our families and students today. We'll be picking first place winners from each school, and those pieces of artwork will be hung up in the district office. We'll also have Best in Show for pre-K through 5th grade, middle school Best in Show, and then high school Best in Show. In addition to those prestigious awards, the superintendent will pick his top choice from those 120 pieces of artwork. We also have the Vero Beach Museum of Art Award. That's new for us this year. We are so excited to have this event at the Vero Beach Museum of Art. We had so many students and families that have participated in this event in the past that we asked the museum if they would host this event, and we are just beyond elated that they have invited us here.
We're really delighted to host this superintendent's art gallery. What's important to realize when you're looking at a Picasso or a Matisse is that every artist was young at some point, and someone gave them encouragement and stimulated this idea that they could be an artist, they could be a great artist. So that's why this is so important, what the school district is doing, and we're happy to be a part of it.
Tonight was a wonderful evening here at the Vero Beach Museum of Art, an opportunity to come together and just enjoy the talents of the school district of Indian River County. It was a joy to have this come back, having the opportunity to look at so much great talent. And it really just highlights the quality of our teachers, the quality of our students here in our school district. It's an absolutely wonderful evening.
Art is intertwined in everything we do, so it's really about 3D art, 2D art, drawing, sculpture, and bringing the students' creativity out. With every piece of art, you can see a student's personality. We want to thank all of our families and students for coming out, all of the art teachers at our schools that helped the students develop all of these pieces of art, and we look forward to hosting this event at the Vero Beach Museum of Art in partnership next year.
Mrs. Perez, are you here tonight? Mrs. Perez, anywhere? I just want to acknowledge Mrs. Perez and the work that she did for the superintendent's art gallery. It is not easy to collect pictures and have all of them framed and to organize an event like this, and I know that she had some help as well. But if we can just give her a round of applause. And the winning piece of artwork from each school will be displayed in our district office, and we've already started hanging some up in the walls. Again, we had some bare walls for a few months, and it was pretty sad, but now we have color back in our hallways, so it's nice. Dr. Moore, I will turn the next presentation over to you.
All right, this is...
One second. Mrs. Maddox, before you go, I just want to say one thing. I just want to make sure to give a shout out to the Executive Roundtable, who provided sponsorship for this event, that helped us give monetary awards, helped frame the art, helped hang the art, helped support it being at the museum, and I want to make sure we recognize them for that.
Yes, let's give them a round of applause, too. Thank you, Dr. Schiff.
All right, the next is a very exciting item. I will set it up for Mr. Fagan. Board members, upon my arrival, we... One of the first items that we had were principals that had perfect audits. So on an annual basis, each school is audited, looking at their finances. And unfortunately, at that time, there was only one school that had a perfect audit. Last year, we once again had the opportunity... You're throwing me off. To recognize the schools, and we doubled it. There were two schools that had perfect audits. And this year, we more than doubled that again. We're up to five schools that had perfect audits. From a principal's perspective, and I know we have a number of principals sitting on this dais, that is no easy task to do. An auditor's job is to find something. So to produce perfect audits, it is a direct reflection of your leadership, your commitment, being thorough in what you're doing, being an absolute outstanding steward of the people's money to maximize performance for students. So we wanted to take the time to acknowledge our five principals with perfect audits. First, Ms. Finnegan from Beachland Elementary. I don't have that information, but you're going to come up and tell her name because she's the one that did all the work. Rachel Toz.
Bethany Rice.
All right.
Bethany. Thank you, Bethany. Those are the people that do the perfect audits.
And Citrus Elementary, Ms. Garcia, perfect audit. You see what I'm talking about, Mr. O'Keefe? See? Sebastian Elementary, Ms. Hart, come on up here. Repeating, second year in a row, Vero Beach Elementary. Bethany.
Yvette Brasley.
Yeah.
And from Alternative Education, Mr. Darielle Brown, come on up here.
Yeah.
Ms. Judy Clark.
Yes, Ms. Clark.
So to the principals and the bookkeepers, absolutely congratulations, outstanding work, and we look forward, board, to having 22 principals up here next year.
That is not easy. Thank you. Congratulations. And fun fact about Ms. Yvette Brasley, she worked at VBE when I was a student at VBE. She's aging backwards, obviously, so I just had to give her a little shout out. Our next, oh, it's your turn. We have a very special proclamation tonight, and this is for Ms. Degresta, and I'm not going to say much because I'll probably tear up, but our board members have put together a proclamation. Each where our statement are their own words, and we would like to just dedicate this month to you, and we appreciate you and we love you. So, Dr. Moore?
I have the last statement. But as, as we set this up, Ms. Degresta, who's been serving this school board and the community and children for, we said 12 years now, is made the bold and courageous, and I'm quite jealous, decision to retire. And we are so proud of the service and support that she's provided us, so we are going to dedicate and approve this proclamation in honor of everything Ms. Degresta has done, and the board will read it as we move through. So I'm not sure where we're starting.
Okay. Proclamation in honor of Suzanne Degresta, November 2021, and appreciation for her service in our district. I want you to note the date of start. Whereas since April 1st, 2009, when she became School Board Attorney for the School District of Indian River County, Suzanne Degresta has served with humility, grace, exceptional knowledge, and dedication. And...
Whereas at each school board meeting, Mrs. Degresta has remained professional, kind, and courteous while giving her legal opinion to board members and the superintendent. And...
Whereas Suzanne Degresta has provided sound legal advice to the School District of Indian River County for the past 12 years, doing so in a professional and objective manner. And...
Whereas always being available, willing to exercise independent professional judgment, and render candid advice on not only the law, but on other considerations as well with a consistent spirit of tranquility. And...
Whereas upon her retirement from practicing law, the School Board of Indian River County acknowledges Mrs. Degresta's lifetime of dedicated legal service and wishes her ongoing health, happiness, and joy in the years to come.
Now therefore, the School Board of Indian River County hereby proclaims November 2021 as Suzanne Degresta Recognition Month.
All right, board members, it's not official yet, and that is because I need to call for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Dr. Schiff, were you the second on that? Okay. We have a third. Any discussion?
No.
I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I believe it's a 5-0 vote.
Yes, ma'am.
And adopted this 16th day of November 2021 on School Board of Indian River County. Thank you.
I would just like to take a picture, because if you notice, every time we do take a picture, she kind of runs off and hides behind the screen, so we're going to make her get in the picture.
In the picture.
In the middle of the picture.
In the middle of the picture. And I'm sure Ms. Degresta was very surprised about everything that has occurred tonight, because in true Kristen Maddox fashion, I included her on the surprise invitation throughout the proclamation and the reception that we had for her, so... Yes, you know, I'm always just trying to keep you with the board when I...
We well missed, because we didn't know who the chair and the vice chair was going to be, so we're going to have to rewrite this proclamation, have it signed and framed, and on the 29th, we'll have it ready to hang in your, your living room for when you retire. But, but thank you so much for what you've done. This is a woman who picks up the phone no matter when you call, will answer any question, regardless of how thoughtful or ignorant it may be, she will answer it in the most professional way. And you may not know this, but she has been in direct service and fully committed to standing behind our teachers and our students since April 1st, 2009, and she's been a true asset to our community. So thank you very, very, very much.
You're still up.
We have the video for them.
Correct, yes. So we've been very busy over the past couple of weeks. We've gathered several people from the community to make a very important bus safety PSA. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated. We have the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Flowers, Chief Curry, Chief Touchberry, Chief Acosta, Debbie and Keith from the Sheriff's Office, who helped us with the recording. We have our bus driver, Ms. Biggs, are you here? I saw you. Oh, there you are, right there. And Ms. Idlette is here as well. Our students, who are also in the video, a crossing guard, the motorcycle unit with Sergeant McKenzie as the leader, and of course, all the other officers who, who helped out with this. If you could please stand if you were in this video, so you could get a little round of applause.
All already standing, but...
So we hope that you enjoy this PSA. There's not, there's a few videos that we've made that give me goosebumps, and I hope this one gives you goosebumps, too. It's pretty good.
School bus transportation plays a critical role in the education of our nation's students. There's a direct link between the neighborhood and the classroom.
More than 25 million children nationwide ride the bus to school. In Indian River County, we serve over 7,000 of those children each and every day.
Working together in Indian River County, we will do everything possible to ensure our students arrive safely to the classroom and back home each day.
Motorists should be alert and drive with caution around school zones and school buses. They should also be alert when driving in places where kids are, including schools, bus stops, school parking lots.
Pay extra attention to lower speed limits in school zones, and watch for and obey signals from the school crossing guards.
Cars are required to stop when approaching a school bus with flashing red lights, and their stop signs are extended.
Motorists who pass a school bus that has stopped and has the stop sign activated commit a moving infraction. That will result in a fine against the motorist, possibly court costs, and three points will be assessed against their license.
If you're stopped for passing a school bus on the right or left, it's a $288 fine plus court costs. It could be up to one year or two years' suspension on your driver's license.
If the highway is divided by a raised barrier or paved median at least five feet wide, you do not have to stop if you're traveling in the opposite direction of the school bus, but you should proceed with caution.
The Wireless Communications While Driving Law prohibits the use of wireless communications device in a handheld manner while driving in a designated school crossing, a school zone, or an active work area.
The penalty for failure to stop for a school bus is a minimum of $100. If a second offense is committed within five years, that person's driver's license will be suspended for up to six months.
Be sure that your children leave for the bus stop on time or a little bit early. Please have them arrive at least five minutes early for their bus, because running after or in front of a bus is extremely dangerous.
Walk young children to the bus stop, or encourage children to walk in groups. There is safety in numbers, and groups are easier for drivers to see.
Teach children good pedestrian behavior. Walk on the sidewalk, and if there's no sidewalk available, please stay out of the street.
Once you're at the bus stop, continue to take the necessary precautions. Children should wait in a safe place away from the road. Never sit on the roadway or a curb while waiting for the bus.
Please do not let your children play in the streets. Playing with balls or other toys that could roll into the street is very dangerous.
Families should also go over safety tips with their children to make sure that they're safe going on and around school buses and school zones.
Make sure your child knows their driver's name and their route number.
Remind your child to keep their head, hand, and arms inside the bus to not cause a distraction for other drivers.
Don't forget to wear your student ID and use it on the bus. The school and your family will always know where you are.
At a railroad crossing, children must stop talking and remain silent so the bus driver can hear if a train is approaching.
The safety of our students and community members is our top priority. Indian River County...
Everyone.
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 Must do our part to protect our children and their future.
So again, that was a community effort, and I knew I would forget a few people of... Sorry, board members, thank you so much for being in that video.
They didn't stand up. They didn't stand up.
You were all, you were all troopers, I know. And our Sheriff's Office and Vero Beach PD in particular, Chief Curry, where are you? You were standing in the rain while we were videoing you. Yes, he did a wonderful job, and I know we had Sergeant McKenzie and his motorcycle unit, like, ride through the bus transportation area probably three times to get just the perfect shot, and they all did a wonderful job. And it was very hot, very hot that day. So if you were a part of this video, if you would please come to the front so we could recognize you and take a picture with the board. And we also had Ms. Mary from Transportation. She was driving our bus. She wasn't in the video, but she was a big help driving a bus for us.
Thank you all. Thank you.
And one more thing. Thank you to Ms. Ann Bieber at Storm Grove for allowing your campus to be used once again for one of our ideas. And for the students that you gathered for us, students, where are you? Raise your hand. You guys are wonderful, wonderful actors and actresses. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for helping. And, Dr. Moore, that's the end of our presentations.
All right, but let's acknowledge the Public Information Office and our team for putting that video together. Absolutely outstanding. And just for the board's information, that is just the creation of the video which we just finished. We still have work to do in pushing that out to local media outlets, putting together a true campaign to inform our entire community of the importance of maintaining bus safety in all areas of our community. So this is just the beginning of the work we've still been charged to do.
Thank you for making that happen so quickly. I will say, I did mention this to FSBA Executive Director Andrea Messina, and she would like a copy of our PSA to show, possibly at the conference, and also to demonstrate to the other school boards that this is a priority for us, and that it should be a priority across the state to make people aware that what the law is and that the safety for our children. Because we learned last meeting that I believe it was 2 million passes a year of stopped school buses are taking place in Florida, which is amazing to me, that that's, that's a sad figure. Is there a blooper tape that's going to come out? Because I, I just... Sure. All right.
And our final... Yeah, I know. I know. Thank you. And our final presentation this evening is our quarter one update. I will be very succinct, board, but typically during presentations, we take the opportunity to acknowledge our community, our partnerships, and acknowledge the contributions we as a community have surrounding the School District of Indian River County. But I wanted to do something a little bit different tonight, and will continue to bring these presentations to the board. I want to talk about teaching and learning. I want to talk about the core work of the school district, the core work of this board, and what we have been collectively charged as a system to do, which is to transform the education in order to ensure we're allowing all students, every single opportunity possible to them, to transform and empower them to find a life of success. So as you go through this presentation, I will call you to the opening of schools. And in 27 years, this is my 28th opening of schools, this has been the most complex opening of schools that any district has experienced, more so for the School District of Indian River County. During the pandemic, we were aggressive in the work that we knew we had to do in order to ensure when we were opened, we were ready to meet the needs of kids. We understood the impact of what that pandemic was going to do. Now, when you look at the outcomes from last school year, you see the School District of Indian River County excelled drastically in comparison to the other 66 districts. Most districts or surrounding districts improved in two, four, or three areas of the nine accountability areas produced by the state. The School District of Indian River County improved in eight of those nine areas. But as we celebrate that success, we understood that is in comparison to others. We have a high bar set for ourselves, and we want to be in the top 10 of all accountability areas within the school district, within the state of Florida. We didn't push back our goals. We didn't say, "Well, because of the pandemic, we're going to reset our goals." In the creation and development of our strategic plan, we were pushing hard, and we continued to push hard. And as a result, we implemented two new contracts with our bargaining units. They were aggressive, compensating them as the highest paid beginning teacher salary on the Treasure Coast, one of the top five median salaries across the entire state of Florida. We understand the impact that teachers have, and we are willing to compensate them for that impact that they have on the lives of children. We implemented a new curriculum. We implemented a new way of planning. There was so much new that we did. Board members will recall, we pushed out over 30 new initiatives. So we knew that rate of change was going to be complex, and we planned for it. But we, what we didn't plan for was a Delta variant to come in and hit us in a way in which all other districts weren't hit. There were two counties in the state of Florida, one of which is Okeechobee, the other is Indian River County, that was hit harder than most districts. So when you put all of the things that were new, and you put the impact of the Delta variant, we had schools that had 18% of their faculty and staff out at one particular time. We had to close two different schools. We exceeded the total number of cases in students and teachers all of last year within the first five weeks of the school year. It was a complex, hard, challenging opening. And I know board members reference it and acknowledge the efforts of those who stand in front of our children each and every single day, and we need to continue to do so. Because when you fast forward and you look seven weeks past the spike of that Delta variant, you see quality instruction. You see teachers who are fully committed. You see classrooms where students are engaged. You see hallways that are empty. Is it still stressful? Yes. Is there still work to be done? Absolutely. But I can tell you, as I said in the workshop earlier today, in the seven to 10 years that I've been doing transformational work, never in my professional career have I seen the rate of change move so fast. And that's a pretty big statement to say, because typically you want, you want to undersell and over-deliver, but I'm over, I'm not underselling or overselling anything. I'm seeing teachers fully committed in how they're planning lessons, how they are aligning the lessons. We are moving in a very, very impressive way. So what I would like to do today, we've concluded the first quarter, we're in the midst of the second quarter, give a quick update, not only to our board, but ultimately our community and some of the things that we're doing as a school system. And we're focusing in on four key areas. Enhanced continuous improvement systems. So the school improvement plan that will be approved tonight, or will be approved on the consent agenda, that is a new way of doing work. That is not just a plan, that is a process. We are one district in the county, in the state of Florida, that created our own improvement model. model aligned to our needs, our teachers, and our students. It's updated four times a year, not the one time that the state of Florida requires it to be open, but each and every single nine weeks, pushing our teachers and our administrators back to what's taking place in classrooms to reflect, to evaluate, to learn, and change and improve the quality of instruction. Looking at the high impact grants, that's continuation and partnership. That additional $60,000 that was approved tonight is a direct relationship that we have created to enhance the dollars we have to put in the hands of teachers. Mr., under the leadership of Mr. Fagan, continuing to implement a, what we call SAM, School Allocation Model, which looks at ensuring that we are equitably providing resources to children across the district based on where students are, not maintaining allocations the way they've always been, but ensuring that that allocation model follows students and those resources are provided that way. We spoke through the audits and looking at equitable hiring practices. We were able to improve our African-American hires from nine to 13%. It was stuck at nine for about seven, eight years. We're now moving that number. Expand knowledge, knowledge and skill, looking at professional development. We continue to look at keeping kids in classroom, problem solving with our teachers to look at meaningful core instruction that is engaging, that keeps students in classrooms, looking at professional development systems that ensure teachers have the ability to create behavior management systems in their schools to continue to modify that instruction. We looked at collaborative planning. Collaborative planning is a new process for us. We continue to work with our teachers to create that process with the ultimate end goal of creating collaboration sites where teachers have the opportunities to work together, provide instructional lessons, come back together as educational professionals, debrief what took place, make those changes and modifications in real time, not to wait to the end of the nine weeks to make a change in instruction, not to wait until the assessment is taking place, but to reflect with their colleagues to make changes on a daily basis to improve the quality of instruction. Provide data-driven support to students. Under the leadership of Dr. McMahon, we have created over 60 dashboards. These are 60 dashboards that allow administrators and instructional coaches to drill down and make direct connections to what they're doing in classrooms on a daily basis to quickly identify the impact that they're having. It allows us to triangulate data. It allows us to look at a student who is in the lowest 25% or 35% and drill down to say, is it an instructional problem, or is it an attendance problem, or is it a behavior problem, or is the student missing school because he is homeless? We're putting all of that data together and just not having it there to look at, but to empower the conversation, to get to the root cause as quickly as possible. Those are the things that you're seeing in our schools. I'll jump to the focused outreach efforts. Continuing to build a sense of community, and I think if you look at the last couple of board meetings, we are continuing to build that relationship. I really can't go anywhere in our community without somebody saying, I saw Will for Heart last night, I saw Will for Heart yesterday, really ensuring that we're building that. Right behind him, Dr. Cowie is everywhere, building partnerships with parents, engaging parents at school sites where we need that support, really continuing to say, now that we're open, now that our schools are fully doors wide open, how do we engage parents and keep them as close to their children to maximize that performance? Dr. Shaffey is in the back. She's leading our climate task force, which is looking at how we are pulling our entire community together to fully understand what good instruction looks like for all students in our school system. So, board, we have been busy over the last nine weeks. It's been a very, very tough start of, start of school, but I'm very, very excited with what we see in schools. And I'm very, very excited about the commitment that our instructional staff and our administrators have in schools. Let's kind of take a snapshot, a snapshot back to where we were at the opening of schools, because in January, I'm going to be bringing you our mid-year data, and that is going to be an exciting time. It's going to be a pivotal time in every school district where we'll be halfway through the school year, and we'll be able to make shifts and modifications to ensure every single child has the opportunity to be successful. This is our opening of school data that we, we took that snapshot. I'm comparing our baseline to 1920 because it was the uninterrupted year because of the pandemic, and we're comparing it to where we started the school year. We're looking at I-Ready. I-Ready, that 32% in 1920, what that number means is, is if the student took that test for the brand-new grade level, they just walked into that particular day, they're taking these assessments from the first couple of weeks of school, they would have been proficient on that day. It's not predicted to where they would be at the end of the school year, but where they would be at the beginning of the school year. And you compare that to quarter one, you see there's a one-point variance. Now, at the end of last school year, what you saw was a three percentage point decrease, which was among the best in the state in terms of decreases for a school district. We don't celebrate a decrease, but you do acknowledge how the district navigated the pandemic. So you're only seeing a one-point decrease as you're starting this school. That is a very, very good sign. Achieve 3,000 is what we use for our upper grade levels, our secondary schools, and you can see only a two-point variance. So in reading, we're seeing less of an impact as a result of the pandemic. Where we are concerned still is math, and it makes a lot of sense if you think about it. You can't jump the rings of a ladder, the rungs of a ladder, you have to go each step. Math requires you to do that. Those students lost a great deal of time, so we're still having to plug in the concepts that they've missed in previous because of the result of the pandemic. So you're seeing a 4% reduction from where we were pre-pandemic. Our goal is to make that up by December. And when you look back to where we were at the end of the pandemic last school year, it was a six, six or seven percentage point decrease. So we're already seeing slight improvements. Then when you look at I-Ready and our, the comparison of what we call the gap, the gap is the, our African-American students in comparison to our white students. In 1920, it was a 22% gap in reading, those are points, versus a 20-point gap now. Not celebrating a, a 20-point gap by any means, but we are acknowledging we're starting at a 2%, or a two percentage point decrease in comparison. When you're looking at I-Ready math, you see a, once again, a decrease of one percentage point in, in that gap. Out-of-school suspensions, you saw in 1920, in the first quarter, 449 students were denied the opportunity to provide the provided instruction. You basically got suspended or put out of school for doing pretty much anything. I don't know how it was, but now you see only 48 students being suspended. And we're continuing to problem solve this. Just this week and last, Mr. Bass is going with union leadership to each and every single secondary school to look at behavior, to evaluate the improvement models that we have in place, to identify best practices and ensure that we are working together and that we're pushing out those best practices across the entire system so all students have the opportunity to benefit from that. Parent workshops, once again, we didn't even track that in 1920, and we're up to 42 this year, and we'll continue to inform our parents where we are in the school system. More, more data. We have been very strategic in accessing our portal, our port, our portal. That is where parents have the opportunity to see how their children are doing on a daily basis. A grades are being entered into our focus on a daily basis. You don't have to wait for progress reports to be issued. You don't have to wait to the end of the nine weeks. You have access to how your children are doing each and every single day if you access the Focus App, and you can see the significant improvement that we've done in there. Representation of African-American certified teachers, we referenced that, nine to 13, we're excited about that. Opportunities for growth, continuous emphasis on addressing the disruption of COVID. Now, the instructional implications, there's still work to be done. We haven't had a COVID case in our schools, whether it be student or adult, for going on two weeks. All of our schools are in the green metrics that we use in our tiered mitigation plan. That's a great sign, and we're looking forward to continuing to monitor that, and we'll be consider, or asking the board to consider pausing that mitigation plan pending the continued success of where we are as a community around the pandemic. We've done a lot of work around ESE, looking at our African-American students, ELL learners, we have a presentation at the request of a board member coming to the board soon to look at that quickly growing population and how we're addressing the needs for them. And increased monitoring and problem solving at school sites around our discipline referrals, and you're looking at our desegregation that we've been under, as referenced this morning, 53 years, still a lot of work to do in that specific area. Continued expansion of communication, the availability of extracurricular activities. Mr. Seymour has done outstanding work in looking at athletics and activities and access. We're in the midst of a working project right now, no, Ms. Bieber is not here anymore, but we're looking at middle school programming and fees and how we ensure that a fee does not impede the ability of a student to participate. Matter of fact, some of the policies that you're approving tonight, it's now policy that a fee can't stand in the way of a child to have access or participation in those events. This board is approving that as well. Continued professional development for African-American parents. We need to problem solve, and we're charging Dr. Cowie along with our principals to continue that work in a drastic, drastic way. Then when you look at our continued effort, most of this I've spoke about, but one of the things we do, I'll walk six to seven schools a week. So this isn't me just looking at data, although I do do that too. This is me walking with principals, really looking at the quality of instruction. And I have a, a very clear point of reference from where instruction was pre-pandemic to where it was when school opened to where it is now. Continuing to maximize choice. I think choice is an opportunity that we continue to leverage as, as a community. One of the things we as a school system are working on is continuing to provide very clear and explicit direction and support and communication to our schools, really working as we are a district of schools and we're connected, the district connects them together, and we're sharing best practices that no one principal feels in isolation all by themselves in one particular school. We are the network, the district is the network that's pulling schools together to facilitate the conversation and share best practices. In order to enhance some of my understanding of what's happening in the district, I pull senior staff on a weekly basis in groups of three or four, and we just sit and have open, honest conversations. What's going on at your level in the organization? What's frustrating you? Where do we need to improve? Mr. Bass is the deputy superintendent, replicates that same practice with principals. Element, two elementary groups, a middle school group and a high school group, really, really trying to understand where are our opportunities to improve so we don't have to wait six, seven months to improve, but we can improve in real time. And then we as a cabinet have the opportunity to come together and debrief and kind of cross-reference what we're hearing in order to ensure that we're being best by kids, and you saw the transportation awareness video, video that we put together. So that's some of the things that we're working on now. A very quick update as to the school district of Indian River County, you'll notice most of this presentation focused in around the efforts of continuous improvement, the efforts of improving the quality of instruction. And we are very much looking forward to bringing to this board and the community the impacts of that improvement of instruction. And I can tell you once again, this is a hard school year. It is a hard school year because teachers are so used to receiving children at a certain academic level. And because of the pandemic, that's not where they're receiving those children. They're very used to having students at a wide array of academic levels, but because of the pandemic, that separation is more than it's ever been. It is hard, complex, complex work. But I fully commend our principals, our district staff, and the work that we're doing. We have really been intentional of pulling everything off of our principals and off our teachers to keep the main thing, the main thing. And I think at the end of the year, you're going to see significant improvements in terms of what the school district is doing. We are, we are moving. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's your presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. At this time, we're going to move to citizen input. Board members, we have eight speakers. I'm going to remind the speakers of our guidelines regarding the amount of time and how to address the board. You were going to give them a break to... Yeah. Anyone that would like to leave at this time, just so we don't have people leaving in the middle of people speaking. No, not you. Back. All right, thank you. Okay. So our guidelines for regarding the amount of time an individual has to address the board. First of all, each statement made by a member of the public shall be limited to three minutes duration. Persons are recognized in the order in which the requests were received. Persons may speak for up to three minutes at the beginning of a business meeting during citizen input as indicated on the order of business and for up to three minutes to each action item during the action agenda and each board member discussion item as indicated on the order of business. Persons may only speak once about any given item. The time period may be extended by the presiding officer, and only the individual submitting a speaker's form is allowed to address the board. Time may not be yielded to other speakers. Okay. I will be calling each person individually. We only have eight speakers, so I'll just call one person at a time. And I just wanted to remind the citizens that we welcome your input. We appreciate you being here, and we appreciate your comments. Please address all comments to the board chair, not to individual board members. Thank you. And with that, we're going to call up our first speaker, Kristi Bell.
Hi, it's hard to go first after all the great presentations. Brings tears to your eyes sometimes watching. But I wanted to come tonight and speak to you all in person. I normally email, but sometimes it's, I think, important that you see that there is support here. Wanted to come tonight to speak about my hope that all the children in our community will be able to find themselves represented both in real life in the district and also in the literature that they read. Family dynamics and relationships come in so many different forms. We love our church, family, our community, our work homes. We also love one another in our classrooms, and none of that takes away from families. We make friends who may think differently than we do, and this is all stuff that you know. We all have different opinions. That doesn't take away from our values to share opinions of others. We see people of different cultures, different belief systems, different kinds of marriage or even many marriages, and we can honor each individual family while still living our own values and lifestyle. The same thing happens when learning about life through reading books. Whether seeing ourselves represented or seeing different lifestyles in books, our values don't become those books. Our values are taught first at home. Sometimes books show representation of our own lives. Other times, we learn about situations maybe we had never been previously aware of. Sometimes a book may show a child that they are not alone, and maybe for the first time. A book may give a child the words that they need to share with a parent or another trusted adult. We can cultivate compassion and awareness when we learn new things through storytelling. As a district, you and others have worked very hard to meet the requirements of this desegregation order and continue to do so. That part is to see children, for children to see themselves represented. That is such good work, important work. Kids need to see themselves represented. And while that is all court ordered, we have to go a little bit further to continue to ensure people's rights, liberties, and representation. You're one of those first lines defending the liberties for all of us. It's a fine line, for sure. Learning true history, being exposed to the ideas and experience of others, isn't something to fear. As you're making decisions regarding instruction and curriculum, I would implore you to remember that stories, literature, music, and the arts is one of the greatest ways for children to learn, and that shouldn't be censored or hidden just for comfort. We can trust that our children are learning our values at home and also allow them the chance to broaden their knowledge. Thank you so much for your time and really all of the hard work that you do. This is so hard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. We appreciate that. Mr. Ryan Blade, you are next.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Blade. I'm the founder and owner of Indian River News. I'm just going to keep this brief and short. So, case in mind, I was wondering why I am staying over there, that is because I am live streaming the public input tonight. I noticed a couple of last meetings, I understand the concerns, you know, making sure nobody does anything foolish and inappropriate per se on camera. However, I do find that it is important that the citizens of Indian River County can see who is speaking during public input. So given that, even though my, my website isn't even up yet, I... So I would ask that the school board consider going and allowing the cameras to be back on the citizens again. And if somebody does something inappropriate, I have previously ran some equipment that has changed cameras. I imagine you probably have something like that in that room. I would suggest maybe talking to your guy who runs that and having him or her go and, you know, have something in place so that way, I think it's probably, I'm guessing probably hitting more or two buttons, you can just change camera angles if somebody does start doing something inappropriate. So that's just a suggestion I'd like to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blade. Michael Seymour Marsh, sorry. Michael C. Marsh is our next speaker. Dr. Moore is on my mind, sorry.
Let's make things very clear. It's one book that has been banned. Who gets to decide what books we're going after? What's next? Mein Kampf, To Kill a Mockingbird? Those didn't make the list. I wonder why? Let's be very clear. This is not the place to have these conversations. We heard about all the implementations by our superintendent. Less than two years, he inherited a mess. If we care so much about all the kids, tomorrow we can go to the ESE Parental Council. Great meeting. We can go Thursday and see Dr. Cowie and go to our Parent Engagement Council. It's all about all of the kids, right? Not one political party. And through the chair, it is a shame that any board member would have any political pandering and be part of any disgusting organization that doesn't speak for all the kids. It's not about Dems versus Republicans, even Libertarians, if we know what that is, but it's about all the kids, right? Next topic, equity. Let's talk about that. Unfortunately, NAACP couldn't come tonight, or at least not the president. But we spent so much money for these equity committee meetings, and we turned in a report card of no bueno, Dr. Moore. But sadly, you know, Dr. Shafte does such great work, and they turned in on page 22, check that report card out, and it make reference to the equity, to the equity chair over there. I'm not sure the exact title. Coordinator, there we go. And it just says her last name. And then the last page has a Facebook thumbs up. My sixth grader could have did a better report card of no compliance to the school district. And lastly, because I like to leave on a positive note, if we really care about all the children, first off, let's go back, thank you to the school district of Indian River County. We had a great event called the Big Burger Blessing, and I've seen many faces that are in here tonight on Thanksgiving Day. We're going to feed over 800 people. So let's forget the partisan nonsense, okay? I'm not giving any free shirts out tonight, but if you want one, I'll get you one. Beautiful children on the back, interracial queens, my two beautiful daughters. So 800 meals, two shelters we're going to take care of. We're going to take care of the foster care kids, all the sober living, the homeless. Remember the homeless? How many do we have here again, guys? 51% of them are in elementary schools. Come on, it's about all the kids, right? Isn't it? Oh, Silence of the Lambs. So anyways, I believe that any of the board members, as well as the superintendent, will take your call any time of the day. He even returns mine, so I know he'll return yours. So this is not the place to talk about books. Are we going to go after Dr. Seuss? Remember what Seuss did back in the day, guys? Uncomfortable conversation, huh? I asked Laura Zork, but unfortunately, she's no longer here. Darn. You know who else isn't here tonight? Tiffany Justice. Darn. Maybe next time, guys. So in closing, thank you very much for everyone who came out tonight. And Reading Rainbow, LeVar Burton once said, "Take a look, it's in a book, Reading Rainbow."
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Patricia A. Foley.
This is a resolution of Indian River County Republican Executive Committee, calling on the school district of Indian River County to uphold the right of taxpayers, parents, and citizens to speak before the school board during citizen input as specified on the meeting agenda without hindering public discussion as it relates to time and topic. Whereas, the Declaration of Independence adopted on July 4, 1776 by Second Continental Congress affirms, quote, "That to secure these rights governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness." Whereas, the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America ratified effective December 15, 1791 decrees that, quote, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercises thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of the people to peacefully assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." Whereas, the Florida Constitution states Article 1, Section 4, Freedom of Speech and Press, "Every person may speak, write, and publish sentiments on all subjects, but shall be responsible for the abuse of that right. No law shall be passed to restrain or abridge the liberty of speech or of the press. In all criminal prosecutions and civil actions for defamation, the truth may be given in evidence. If the matter charged as deformatory is true and was published with good motives, that party must be acquitted or exonerated." Whereas, under Florida statutes Title 49, Chapter 10, 14, Parents' Bill of Rights, the school board is directly and indirectly infringing on the rights of parents by diminishing their opportunity to publicly address issues that are relevant and germane to the education of their children. Whereas, school board members are elected by the citizens of Indian River County and therefore are obligated to listen to their input on topics that are relevant and pertinent to them, their children, families, and community. Whereas, proposed changes to policy 0169 dot one, public participation at board meetings have the intent to minimize, limit, reduce, and/or stifle citizen input by reducing time and topic. Whereas, taxpayers in the community are opposed to their elected officials using tactics that will minimize, limit, reduce, and/or stifle their right to be heard, therefore be it. Resolved that the Indian River County Republican Executive Committee calls the school district of Indian River County to make no changes that will reduce, minimize, stifle, or limit citizen input based on time and topic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Foley. Jennifer Pippin is next.
My name is Jennifer Pippin, and first and foremost, I'm a mom. My son will be 13 years old tomorrow, and my daughter's 15. I'm the chairman for Moms for Liberty Indian River, Florida, and one of the co-founders for We the People Indian River County. I would first like to thank the entire board for not changing the public input for the school board meetings and listening to your constituents on this. Thank you, Mrs. Rosario, for all your help with giving us the resources to find all of the pornographic and inappropriate books in the libraries. Thank you, Mrs. Berenborg, for your email in response to this issue. Thank you, Mr. Barefoot, for your call in response to this issue and expressing publicly on the radio the partnership in resolving this issue. I believe from the responses to the discovery of the pornographic and inappropriate books, everybody seems concerned, and we all agree that pornographic material has no business in children's hands. There is no educational value to children reading about rape, incest, festality, pedophilia, sexually explicit content, or sexual acts in direct violation of the statutes that protect children from pornography in schools. Those statutes are in place to protect children from the authors, publishers, and the people who want to sexualize children. What adults do behind closed doors is their own business. Parents have the final say in what's best for their children. I hope, wish, and pray that policies are made or followed, and if Moms for Liberty Indian River, Florida, or We the People Indian River County could assist with this further, we will continue the partnership and be happy to do so with the school district. On the list of books and cited information we provided to the school district doesn't include the classic titles like The Bible, Catcher in the Rye, Dr. Seuss, or Shakespeare. They are books that violate laws and statutes that these reading materials being in the hands of children K to 12 schools is in violation. Mrs. Schiff and Mrs. Jones, we haven't heard a word from either of you since these materials...
Excuse me, please direct all comments to the chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to know if everybody on the board is approving of these materials and the pornography on the shelves in our libraries. This should be a nonpartisan issue, nonpolitical issue, as I think most people would agree sexualizing children or normalizing sexually explicit information against state statute would be wrong to do. This is a third degree felony to distribute pornography to a minor in the state of Florida. Again, I want to thank you for putting this on the agenda and taking care of this today. Our children deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pippin. Please do not clap. Please refrain from clapping. Let me remind the audience that is also against a state statute to disrupt a school board meeting. So please do not clap. We appreciate that. It's fair to both, all the people in the room. All right, Ms. Dee Lavandera. That's fine. Jazz hands, do not interrupt anybody.
I heard the superintendent say, gosh, I don't like where we're going, honest to say, in this county, from what I've read in the last month, in the papers, heard on the radio. I'll leave it at that. Providing sexually explicit materials to minors is not only disturbing and problematic, possibly criminal. Now admittedly, I'm not an expert, but I can read what the experts say. Many experts warn of the harms of pornography upon children and adults, causing people to objectify other people. It's very disturbing what I read, but just speaking at a practical level, children engaging in sexual activity can often, if not always, lead to heartache. You fall in love as a child, where can it go? Where can it go? I have through various ministry organizations witnessed this firsthand with children and adults. Abortions, the devastating results of that afterwards. Adults that have told me of traumatized sexual relationships among children. Sexual abuse from adults upon minors and among children leave victims scarred, often for years and years. This book, I won't read you the details of it, but I will read you the summary of some of the stuff. Naomi, the main character, is sexually abused by her stepfather, Henry, as a child and continues after her mother's death. The church pastor encourages her stepfather to marry Naomi before she has even finished school. Evil church pastors. A gas explosion happens at the local school, and her little sister is killed. Graphic descriptions of her body parts all over. The dead sister's twin brother lies with her body until they can bury her. Many of the teen and adult characters masturbate. Multiple comprehensive enough instructions on giving hand jobs, adults, males training teen girls, female masturbation of the protagonist justified for pain relief and mental escape by a girl living through the trauma of being sexually abused by a stepfather. Male masturbation by both the stepdad villain and the love interest hero. The main character has graphic sexual activity with her boyfriend, Wash.
Thank you, Ms. Lavandera. Lamar Nodajakamo.
I just want to point out FS 106.342B clearly prohibits sexually explicit material. Any instructional material containing pornography or otherwise prohibited by S 847.012 may not be used or made available within any public school. And FS 847 point 0123 states, "A person may not knowingly sell, rent, or loan for monetary consideration to a minor. Any book, pamphlet, magazine, printed material however reproduced, or sound recording that contains any matter defined in S 847.001, explicit and detailed verbal descriptions or narrative accounts of sexual excitement or sexual conduct, and that is harmful to And for all those who want to scream, "Book burning, book burning," let me just point out that pornography is not protected speech. I don't want it for myself, I don't want it for my husband, I don't want it for my kids, I don't want it for my grandkids, and I don't understand why anyone would justify that. I don't understand why Chee Chee Palm would attack Jennifer Pippin for standing up for the protection of minors from this smut that's being promoted to our kids and made available on the school shelves for any age from K to 12. And I just want to point out that clapping is okay throughout the whole meeting, except during public comment, which I think is a little bit hypocritical. So I would encourage everyone who agrees with what I'm saying to stand up, since we might get escorted out of the room or arrested if we clap during public comment. So yeah, that's my, I've noticed, you know, that all of the rah rah, the parade happens at the beginning of the meeting, the media's all over it, and then when it comes time to public comment, and they even interview some of us, and it never makes the cut. Why is that? It seems like the board is more concerned with their public image than they are about the crap that's being fed to our children. So you had your parade, and now we're cleaning up the elephant poop, and it's not fun. And then when you don't allow people to clap or express any emotion, it's very hypocritical, because you did that all throughout the meeting. So I just want to point that out. Just see if I can squeeze something else in before my time runs out. The Supreme Court has ruled that transmitting obscenity and child pornography, whether via internet or other means, is illegal under federal law for both adults and juveniles. By the way, that was under Janet Reno, and she's not a Republican. Obscenity is not protected under First Amendment rights to free speech and violations of federal obscenity laws or criminal offenses. The US courts use a three-pronged test commonly referred to as the Miller Test to determine if given material is obscene. Obscenity is defined as anything... Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nodjakamo. Mr. Thomas Kenny.
How you all doing? I just want to take a little different tact here because I heard the interviews on Bob Seuss by the school board superintendent, Mr. Moore. You know, one of the things that really got me out here was when Mr. Moore, while in my car, said, "Well, a lot of these books are in the top 100 that kids read." And I thought to myself, me being someone who's been in media for 20 years as a professional, I asked Jennifer, I said, "How many of these, how many copies per book do we get around here in this little rural county of Indian River?" She says, "Well, five, six." What do we got, about 35, 3,700 counties in the United States? So essentially, a publisher selling one author, about 37,000 when you get right down to it, automatically, covering their rights costs. The publisher is running this through the Follett system. Follett's out of Illinois. The publisher's making a lot of money on my taxes and yours. The publisher is paying our authors. And if you got 100,000 books sold to school systems, then what do you have? You have a top 100 book. Thank God that a lot of these kids haven't checked this stuff out. Tells me that these books really aren't being read by kids, and they're not that popular, yet they shouldn't be here at all. That's number one. That's number one. Number two, I was reading some history. James Monroe entered William &amp; Mary at age 16 in 1774, and then he did a little stint in a war. 1780, he went back there, and he wanted to study. And there was a governor in Virginia that took him under his wing and got him his library reading, and spent personal time with him and a few other students. His name was Thomas Jefferson. And from there, at one point, he gave him 40 volumes of parliamentary law when he went into law school, so he knew what was going on. We are so disengaged from what our kids are reading here at this level that they have no idea how to really navigate life. Instead, one of the authors is a 15-year progressive LGBTQ activist turned sexual fantasy writer, and now her book is being distributed in this school. So I find it a little disheartening. I don't have kids here, but I do pay my taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Before we move further, I do want to make one statement, that is, that when I ask for no clapping is because I'm enforcing, as the board chair, the rule that the board has voted on for citizen input. Citizen input is a different process than when we celebrate children and accomplishments for the school district. So that's the distinction between those two. I know Dr. Moore would like to speak to some of the items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a, some points of clarity. First and foremost, as the board knows, and actually Ms. Pippin highlighted, the board took no action to modify public comment. So the only policy that that was, it was pulled, that policy was not proffered, a slight change based on the desire to collect information at 5:45, so there's been no action taken by this board to modify public comment. That remains the same. In relation to the top 100, what I was referencing was a company that's marketing books as top 100. I'm not saying they're within the top 100, but that is how the company is actually marketing those particular texts. I know we're going to talk about that in a minute, but I would like to say we are taking very specific action as it relates to the inappropriate pornographic content that is in a book. That is very, very specific to what we're looking at, that is the process that we need to follow when you're looking at that specific statute. Taking the time to look at what process wasn't followed, and then what do we do as a system to ensure that that specific statute is being aligned to within our school system? And that's the work that we're currently doing. We will do it swift, we will do it quickly, but that is the process that we're currently looking at. The process wasn't followed, I will be honest, as I said before during the workshop, when you're in the midst of transformation and reform, and there's solid leadership or structures in place, things like this go to the wayside. And in this school system, this will not be the last time we find a process or procedure that isn't in place, or is in place, but not being followed. But this district has led from the front. This district has made that information available, and this district will take the corrective action in order to ensure that pornographic information in libraries that violates the statute is not there. And that is the work that we're currently charged with doing. And I know that we'll talk about that a little bit later, but those are some points of clarity.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Moore. We appreciate citizen input. Without it, we wouldn't know what the feeling is of our community, so we appreciate that. Moving on, we have consent item agendas that everybody already, yeah, we didn't call for anybody to move anything, so we're going to call for a motion to approve the consent and agenda items. Can I ask for a motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Barefoot, and a second by Dr. Jones. Any discussion on consent? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, passes 5-0 on consent. Along with consent, I just want to make a comment that we just approved several donations to the district, and like to say thank you to the Garden Club of Indian River County, Education Foundation, and of course, we had $57,029.17 donated in grants, so we appreciate that. Georgie Warren Corporation, Valmetta Leek Tumi Literary Group, Felix Popple Post Number 39, and UCF were all donations that we received during our consent items, so thank you for those. Okay, we are on to 5A, Approval of the Amended Business Meeting Minutes. And I guess I don't have to write that in? Got it. All the way to 13, yes, because those are all consent, got it? It's hard when you're dealing with a book instead of the online. Appreciate that. I'm going to take a second.
You didn't know you would be doing this today.
No, thank you. Thank you for that out. We'll wait for the room to clear. Okay, moving on to Action Agenda, 13A, Public Hearing and Adoption of Revised Policies, 9/28/21. On September 28th, 2021, the school board moved approval to set a public hearing date to adopt district school board policies. The purpose of the revisions is to be consistent with present practice and litigation, legislation, sorry. The policy change was followed in accordance with Florida statutes under Florida Administrative Procedures Act, Chapter 120, Rulemaking, and School Board Bylaw 0131. I'd like to call for a motion.
So move.
Dr. Jones, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barefoot. I believe we have a board member out of the room, so I'm going to call for the vote.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, thank you.
It's a public hearing.
It says discussion and vote. Do I have to discuss and vote?
You hold a public hearing first, and then you discuss and vote afterward.
Okay. No, I don't have it. Sorry, say that again. Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak to this item? It's Public Hearing and Adoption of Revised Policies, 9/28/21. Seeing none, then I'm going to call for the vote.
Are we going to have discussion?
I'm going to call for discussion?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so I'd like to call for discussion. Ms. Rosario, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I wanted to bring to your attention, in July, July 20th of this past year, I brought forth an item for several policies to change and have the written language of the rule FA 6A 1.094124, which is essentially the critical race theory ban to be added to several of our policies. It was presented to the board at that time, it was written out, Mr. Meyer actually added all of that into several of the policies, including professional development. The board actually gave feedback and said, "Let's wait for Neola and see what Neola presents to us." Neola included in Policy 2215. Is this the right one?
No, 165, 166.
No, why am I getting, am I in the wrong place?
Mrs. Rosario, the agenda item in front of the board are proposed revisions to different policies. You're talking about some policies that were reviewed at the workshop?
Yeah? So why can't we discuss those?
Because this is 165, 166.1, and 168.
Oh, we're in the wrong place?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, goodness gracious.
That's why I was kind of surprised you wanted to speak to this.
Sorry, I'm in the wrong place.
Anyone else like to have a discussion about these? No? We're all good?
Wish we could press rewind.
That's okay.
All right.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, so I'm going to call, I'm going to call for the motion, and I got a motion, I got a second, I'm going to call for the vote.
Should've said something sooner. I see her like inching up.
I didn't know where you were going with that.
I wasn't looking at, I wasn't looking at you, okay. All right. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Those, anyone opposed? Okay, it's a 5-0 vote. All right, moving to Action Agenda Item B, Approval of Redistricting. Okay? Do I have to read this entire thing?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay.
No, ma'am. Was there any public comment signed up for this particular item?
This is another action item? Uh, no.
Okay.
I had 13C, I did not have 13B. We're in 13B.
Would you like me to give a?
I have, all of these are on 13C. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Baranborg. Board members, we've talked about this issue a few times during workshop. This really has to do with your voting districts. As we have discussed, each, every 10 years, the census data is presented locally, and to the extent it revises where citizens are living within Indian River County, then both the county commission and the school board need to go through a process to be sure that their voting districts are as equal in population as possible, as practicable. And in Indian River County, the school board typically adopts the same map as adopted by the county commission. And this year, the county commission, once it got the disaggregated census data, it was able to prepare a few maps, and they went through a couple of public hearings with a few different maps. At the last county commission meeting, the county commission did approve Proposed Map 1B, which is one of the items attached to this agenda item. That is the map the county commission intends to bring forward at a public hearing in December to approve as its new districts for voting for county commission. And the school board members at a workshop at least had indicated a desire to express your intent to adopt the same map once the county commission finalized the map. And so this item is just summarizing that in the agenda description. It provides a copy of the map that the county commission would be adopting in December, and you had expressed a desire to express your intent to adopt the same map at your meeting in December, once the county commission finalized the map. So this agenda item is really just for the board to discuss as needed, or to express your intent to adopt the same map in December. And I have already prepared a draft resolution for the board in December, so that the paperwork is ready. That's not for your approval tonight, that will be done in December, but this is just an opportunity at a board meeting for you to have any discussion you wished, and then to express your intent. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is literally just to put it on the schedule for December 14?
Yes.
All righty. So I'd like to call for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Sorry, who was the second? All right, any discussion on this item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it passes 5-0. Thank you. All right, now we are to 13C, Approval of Review of Library Books and Media Center. I believe I need to ask for citizen input first, before you present the item.
Yeah.
Correct? That's the order?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, let me go back a second. We have five people that have asked to speak to this item. Call them up in order. The first one is Mara McDaniel.
Hi, my, ah! Hi, my name is Mara McDaniel, and I'm a student here in Indian River County. A group of citizens are here to ban a list of books, and I want to make sure that the books about alternative families and alternative love remain in our libraries. It's important for all people to have books that represent their point of view. LGBT youth are struggling to understand their thoughts and emotions. Books are often their biggest support. If you take away this support, it could be devastating. LGBT youth have a 40% suicide rate nationwide. Forty percent. And they need respect and representation more than ever. You are our first line of defense for our liberties. Please leave them in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. It's brave to get up there and speak as a student, we appreciate that. Cindy Gibbs.
Good evening. I got a little confused about how this all works, so I'm going to paraphrase. I just, because it's Thanksgiving time, I just want to say how grateful I am that we have the C-Palm's website available to us as parents and educators, so that when we're a little confused about things that we're learning about in school, we have extra resources we can go look at as parents to make sure we fully understand. And I did want to point out one that I learned a lot about when my daughter was in seventh grade two years ago. It's standard SS 7C2, which is evaluate the roles, rights, and responsibilities of United States citizens, and to determine methods of active participation in society, government, and the political system, including bias, symbolism, and political propaganda. So I'm really excited that our children in this school district have the ability to read about those things in social studies class, so that when they are reading the library books, they can understand implicit bias and things like that. Following up, more to the point. Thanks for your time. Thank goodness we have well-stocked libraries at our schools, and computers for all of our kids, so that they can all access information they need to feel included and safe. I'm glad that a kid who is angry about his parents losing their house, or getting a divorce, can read a book about other kids who have this issue, so they can explore some options and just not feel alone. I'm glad that a kid who is questioning their sexuality and feels confused, and who knows they can't turn to an adult at school because their parents might be contacted, and they're not ready to have that conversation, they have a safe space in the library to find comfort and information in a book. One of our greatest assets in this country is to access, is access to our information, and we can't take it lightly by eliminating things that make us uncomfortable. My truth may not be the same as someone else's, but it's not up to me to decide that for anyone else. Let's make sure that we're looking at all of the data and reading through everything before we decide to eliminate anything. And I also want to just say thank you, Dr. Moore. You kind of already hinted that this is the process, and I appreciate that it's going to be done thoroughly.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Jennifer Pippin. Did Ms. Pippin speak to this item when she spoke at the beginning?
No. She spoke to something else, not about...
She did bring up books and this issue, that's why I'm asking.
Do we have people speaking at both times?
They can speak to, they can speak at both times, they just can't speak to the same item. That's why I'm asking that.
I don't recall her speaking about it. I think she just said, "Thank you" to those who supported, but not to the books. Or Media Center, I don't...
Dr. Shif-
I don't recall her mentioning that.
I recall her speaking about books and the content of books, and its relevance to statute.
Yes.
We can always check the tape, but I recall those comments.
Is she here? Ms. Pippin? Okay. Hi, Ms. Pippin. Just for note, you can speak to two different items. You can speak at citizen input, and you can speak again when an item comes up on action. You just can't speak to the same topic or same item twice.
Okay.
Okay?
No problem.
When you spoke earlier, did you mention, because there is some discussion on the board, about speaking about the books?
Yes, this is specifically about the books.
Okay, but when you spoke earlier?
Right, I was just thanking the board for their due diligence and the process.
That's what I remember. Okay. Are we comfortable moving forward? Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Pippin. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, many parents have reached out, grandparents, community members, wanted me to read a couple of the cited information from the books, because they don't feel that some of the board members are taking this as serious as they should. They were listening to it in certain news outlets, radio stations and such. Triangles by Ellen Hopkins, Book Number 22, submitted to the school district of Indian River County. "Now that you're wet, I'm going to do something I've always wanted to. He slips one finger inside me, two, three, at four, the pressure becomes terrific. He works his entire hand into that narrow place, and over the flashing silver paint, I shuddered in orgasm. I come again, and again, and again, and now does he." The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison, Book Number 32, submitted to the school district of Indian River County. "They don't know that she will give him her body sparingly and partially. He must not enter her, lifting the hem of her nightgown only to her navel. He must rest his weight on his elbows when they make love, to avoid hurting her in her breast, but actually to keep her from having touch or feel too much of him. When he moves inside her, she will remain dry between her legs. She hates the clucking sound they make when she is moist. When she senses spasm, she will make rapid movements to get to her fingernails in his back, suck in her breath..." in his back, suck in her breast, and pretend she's having an orgasm." "The Truth About Alice," book number 41, submitted to the school district of Indian River County. Page number 27. "Mark my words, Brandon," he said. "That dude's never gonna get any, the P-word, ever." "The Jump," page 26. "Paul D. went from a calf to a girl, and it wasn't that almighty. Not the leap that was believed, and in the cornstalks, in the quarters, a yard away from the cabins, others who had lost out, was a gesture of tenderness, and hailed wanted privacy for her, and got public display." Book number 13, submitted to the school district of Indian River County. "His attentions therefore gradually settled onto those humans, whose bodies were at least offensive, children. He further limited his interests to little girls. Why do I have to die? I'll miss the little girls most. I always played with them, it was like a party. I would give them mints, money, and they'd eat ice cream with their legs wide open while I played with them." These books have no educational value, and sexual, the sexuality for these children is unacceptable. And that's just a few of the 58 we submitted for review, because of the pornography.
Thank you, Ms. Pippin. Chris Allen.
Hi, my name's Chris Allen. I guess I just, I wanted to re-mention, one of the people already mentioned Florida statute 1006.34 to B4. Any instructional materials containing pornography are otherwise prohibited by S847.012, may not be used or made available in any public schools. And this does include school libraries. So why would SDIRC have books containing child molestation, incest, and bestiality, just to name a few? These are horrible topics that make adults cringe. Many of them are of illegal acts. They should not be available in our schools, or bought with our tax money. How can we protect our children from monsters if they're reading about them at school? How does this help our children excel academically? Books open our minds to new worlds. Is this really what you want to open their mind to? I do, honestly, I do want to thank the board, and I do want to thank Dr. Moore, because you have been receptive, and you've been trying to do something, and it looks like you're gonna look into the process. Because unfortunately, many school boards aren't doing that. Some of them are allowing it. But I do want to see transparency and accountability in this matter. Some of these books have been here since 2012. This isn't just one oversight, this didn't start last year. It's a gross oversight, and it's systemic, because it's in the FOLE system and the AR books. We don't know how it slipped through the cracks, but hopefully you guys do a root cause analysis, why was there a breakdown in policy? And what is SDIRC doing to find these books themselves? That's something that I haven't heard myself, but how you're gonna find it yourself. Like, we thank you for working with us, but there also has to be a process on how it's gonna be found. We do ask that you look into the policy and strengthen it, and have it follow state statute, because that's pretty, it's clear, it's night and day. They should not be allowed. You know, some people are calling this a book ban. It's intentionally labeled that way, as that's, you know, that's what bad actors do. They haven't even looked at our materials, Jennifer just read some of them. It's disgusting. "Children are impressionable, and their innocence should be protected. Students should not be exposed to the ugliness of the world, nor should they read about topics that are not age appropriate. Please fix this issue."
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Last speaker, Crystal McIntyre.
Definitely way off what I had written down here, of these thoughts up here, but... We keep finding ourselves here arguing over inflated issues, issues that some of us see fueled by inappropriately placed politics, social media ploys, even now some radio hosts. I just feel like if we spent all of this energy, and all of these late nights, and all of these hours exploring ways that we can make things better for everybody, it would just be the best thing to do with our time. How we can pick the best curriculum for all of our kids, and not one that just fits the public agendas. How we can find the best COVID plan, and not one that just fits that agenda. And now we're here, trying to find the best set of books. In our opinion, would be for all kids, and not just our own kids, for everybody's liberties, and not just the ones that we value for ourselves. My liberties are different, my values are different, your morals are different. I know a lot of people are here to discuss the book thing, and the sex thing. It's just a handful of so, so many books. What seems like at this point, I'm exaggerating 2,000 books here, but it's up to like, over 100 books now, at this point? And there's maybe just a handful of inappropriate stuff, hard stuff. Everybody lives hard stuff. Some of these kids don't have families at all. The R-class is a family, or whatever that title was. You can't put boundaries on what's a family, when you're not exposed to kids who either A, don't have a good family, B, don't have any family at all, maybe have some families that are doing those terrible things in those books, and it's uncomfortable for us, but it's needed for them. I'm confident that you guys can see through this smoke show, the handful of books being read over and over again, to pique the interest, to gain a following. I'm confident that you guys have the best interest of all kids, and not just the kids with the loudest parents, some that even don't have parents, as hard as that may be for some of us to face. I look forward to the days that you guys can focus your workshops on actual work, your business meetings on real business, and when I can stop public speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Alright, that is all the public input that we have for this item. It is item, action item 13C. And I am going to turn it over to Ms. Rosario, it is her item.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you, board members, thank you, citizens. I want to start with a little bit of a, I guess a timeline here. On October 28th, I saw a video on YouTube. It just showed up. I clicked on it, it had a parent reading a book at a board meeting in another state, wasn't here in Florida. And I read the book, I mean, I listened to an excerpt being read from this book, and it was disgusting. I immediately emailed the video, and that link to the video, to our superintendent, and the assistant superintendent of instruction, of curriculum and instruction, Mr. Meyer, who is not here this evening. And I received immediate feedback from both. Dr. Moore agreed that it was vulgar, and Mr. Meyer actually agreed that this book has no place in our K-12 schools. And at which point, he said, "I cannot, I can confirm that it is not in any of our school libraries." My original email went out at 7, I think it's 7:28 a.m. And my email from, missed, response from Mr. Meyer came to me at 10:05 a.m. And then, Mr., Dr. Moore actually responded somewhere around 9 o'clock-ish. By that time, already by 10 o'clock, I already emailed our attorney to ask some questions about where we are, where our district has any policies regarding library and media center processes, how we select our books, what are AR points, how are accelerated readers selected for our schools? And of course, she sent me a link shortly thereafter, of all of the backup that board members, you all have, attached to this item. I would also like to say that following these, looking at this video, I went into our library FOLET system here in Indian River Schools, which was an email that you all received, from Mr. Meyer, I think on September, I'll pull that up right here, in case anybody wants to do a public records request. It was sent to all of us September 27th, letting us all know that if there are any parents that have any concerns, they can actually go to a website, or rather, the link, which is thefoletindianriverschools.org forward slash, and then 24/7, they can search, do a public search, on any of the books that are in our libraries. That, by the way, is supported by statute. Specifically, this was in regard to two books at that time, that he did research on, and said they were not in our schools. However, in response to this in particular one, I, by this time, already notified Mr. Meyer that we had indeed, even though he said we did not have any of those, these books in our libraries, we actually did. We had two books that were found, two copies, in the Vero Beach library system. I sent that to Mr. Meyer, I sent that to Dr. Moore. Just about immediately, they responded very, very quickly, and had those books removed. The book was titled "All Boys Aren't Blue: A Memoir Manifesto." So they were quite literally, almost immediately, removed from our shelves and from our system. So I have to say thank you to Dr. Moore, and to Mr. Meyer for that, for quickly responding. At that point, though, it started me asking questions about our entire system. The next question was, how did this book actually end up on our shelves? What was the process? What does statute say, and where are we? I come to find out that we do have a policy, which of course, you all have this in your backup, number 2520, let me keep my pace here, so that I know what I'm doing. 2520A, it is titled "Selection of Instructional Materials and Equipment." In this policy, it actually states, on the second page, letter D1, that there is a procedure for selection of library or media center materials. That the curriculum and instruction department, in cooperation with the committee, and then shortly above that, it explains what the committee ought to be doing, but there should be a committee, with the committee shall be responsible for the selection of all materials housed in a library or media center. Upon notification of the availability of funds for the purchase of such resource materials, the administrative assistant bookkeeper will prepare a request form, which includes the amount of money available to a grade level or subject area for new or additional materials. And I, and I, I'm jumping ahead, and I'm assuming this is what Dr. Moore was mentioning earlier, in terms of what we found out we did not do appropriately. And I'll let Dr. Moore follow up on that in just a little bit. But, on November 3rd, keeping up with the timeline, on November 3rd, there was a response from Mr. Meyer on some of the questions that I had. And board members, it's important for you to hear these, because I, with, in keeping with that one particular book that was removed, it turns out that book was an AR book. Being an accelerated reader book, it means that a student has to read that book, and if the student takes the quiz, they get AR points, they get accelerated reader points for that book. I can't even imagine how somebody would read that book, and think that it would be appropriate to actually create a quiz for a student to take, to receive points for it. So, one of the questions that I inquired about was, how are books selected, vetted, and chosen for AR points? And his response was, AR, accelerated reader, is a software program owned by Renaissance Learning, which is simply, which is, simply creates online book quizzes for nearly every title ever printed. To my knowledge, they do not limit the titles which tests are produced for, as they do not sell or advocate the books themselves. Effectively, our students can bring most all books from home, and take an AR test on it. The next question I had was, are school libraries meant to be like public library system, or should they be unique and specific to address our standards and curriculum? His response is, was, "Florida school boards have authority of what is in their libraries. There is no statute, to my knowledge, which requires board, which requires board to maintain any specific content in our libraries. There is, however, a list of administrative procedure developed in 2014, which is certainly within the district's prerogative to change. I might add that I've asked for this administrative procedure, and I did not receive it, otherwise you would have received it, it would be attached in your backup." I'd like to go, before I continue, down to my next question here. His response said, "There is no statute, to my knowledge, which requires the board to maintain any specific content in our libraries. This is not correct." Let me read, let me read from you why that answer was not correct. One, was that policy that we had have in place, that I just read, policy 2520A. The second item that I'd like to share with you is Florida statute 1006.28. This statute requires the board to maintain specific content in our libraries. And I'll read, I'm not gonna read the entire statute, but I'll read just some highlighted points to it. Number one, each school district is responsible for the content of all. All instructional material. And any other materials used in a classroom, made available in a school library, or included on a reading list, whether adopted and purchased from a state-adopted instructional materials list, adopted and purchased through a district instructional materials program under 1006.283, or otherwise purchased or made available. So essentially, that means all instructional material, including the school libraries. Each school district board shall maintain on its website a current list of instructional materials by grade level purchased by the district. Though I'm not, I don't know if we do this, that's another question for another day. I'm gonna go down to 2B. Any, any material used in a classroom. Any material used in a classroom made available in a school library, or included on a reading list, contains, or included on a reading list, that the content is, that is pornographic, or prohibited under 847.012, is not suited to student needs, or their ability to comprehend the material presented, or is inappropriate for the grade level and age group for which the material is used. This is talking about what is obviously not accepted. If the school district, or if the school board finds that an instructional material, such as these library books, does not meet the criteria under sub-subparagraph A, or that any material contains prohibited content under sub-subparagraph B, which we obviously have, the school district shall discontinue the use of the material for any grade level or age group for which such is inappropriate or unsuitable. Moving down on this policy, on this statute, D reads, "The School Library and Media Services, the establishment and the maintenance of it. Establish and maintain a program of school library and media services for all public schools in the district, including school library media centers, and the school library media centers should be open to the public. And, in addition, such traveling or circulating libraries, as may be needed for the proper operation of the district school system. Each school district shall provide training to the school librarians and media specialists regarding the prohibition against distributing harmful materials to minors under 847.012," which is the statute speaking on obscenity, "an applicable case law, and best practices for providing students access to age-appropriate materials and library resources." And it continues on with who is responsible for all of this, but ultimately, it falls on the school's superintendent. The obscenity statute is one that is very clear. So there is a concern about a particular organization, or this board member here, asking for a ban on our libraries. And board members, I'm not asking for a ban on our library books. What I'm asking for is essentially- What I'm asking for is essentially a ban on all of the books that are not statutorily appropriate for our kids, and that are obscene and pornographic in nature. Statute 847.012, harmful materials, sale or distribution to minors, and production prohibited. This statute actually very clearly states exactly what is, the definition of knowingly, it begins, and I think that's important because, once we know, and once we have knowledge of, or reason to know, or the belief or the ground that warrants further inspection, then we are obligated to act on it. So once these books became knowledgeable to us, we are obligated by statute to respond. So this isn't about me pandering to a particular group, because lo and behold, the group that is in question, Moms for Liberty, and I'll say it, Moms for Liberty is not even a year old. I'm 51 years old. And for long before Moms for Liberty became an organization, I had my own views, my own thoughts, my own faith, I've had my own opinions, and I've had my own way of living. So I'm not pandering to any organization, I just want that to be clear. Board members, I want you all to know that that is not the case. What is the case here is the fact that there are books that are on our shelves that violate our statutes. Again, statute 847.012 reads, "Any person, a person may not knowingly sell, rent, or loan for monetary consideration to a minor." Underneath that A, it says, "Any picture, photograph, drawing, sculpture, motion picture film, videocassette, or similar visual representation or image of a person or portion of a human body, which depicts nudity or sexual contact, conduct, sexual excitement, sexual battery, bestiality, or sadomasochistic abuse, and which is harmful to minors. Or, B, any book, pamphlet, magazine, printed matter, however reproduced, or sound recording, that contains any matter defined in statute 847.001, explicit and detailed verbal descriptions or narrative accounts of sexual excitement or sexual conduct, and that is harmful to minors. Five, any adult, an adult, may not knowingly distribute to a minor on school property or post-on-school property any material described in subsection 3, which is the one that I just mentioned, on depicting nudity, sexual content, and so on. As used in that subsection 3, the term "school property" means the grounds or facility of any kindergarten, elementary school, middle school, junior high school, or secondary school, whether public or non-public. This subsection does not apply to the distribution or posting of some other information that's actually talking about our regular curriculum." And so with that, I'm going to just end it here on this statute with six, that says, "Any person violating any provisions of this section commits a felony of the third degree." So I just want to be sure that we are not committing a felony. We are now aware, so we now have the obligation to act. So the next question that I asked on my email is, what is the legal and moral standard to identify books that are X-rated, vulgar, and absolutely inappropriate? His response was, ultimately, the legal standard is to ensure that we do not have pornographic materials in our schools. There isn't anything which requires us to set a schedule to identify or review, and most districts make every attempt to stem this from the start, not to expect to find things once they are in the system, which I understand. But now that we understand that we have these books on our shelves, some are saying, well, how come they haven't already been taken off? I actually asked that question just the other day. A citizen requested an update as to the status of some of the books that were, you know, emailed in. I kind of lost track of all of the titles. I don't know if some of you have, but I've been reading them, but I kind of lost track of the numbers, so I don't know where we are. But on that, somewhere in there, we received notice that the district, under, the direction of Mr. Meyer, was going to review the books that are on the shelves as they came in, because obviously, and Dr. Moore and I agreed, that was a good place to start. Where do we start? Because that's a giant, gigantic undertaking of actually reviewing every single book on our shelves. And so that was a good place to start. When this item was added to the agenda as an action item, Mr. Meyer stopped reviewing those books. His email said that he wanted to wait until after tonight's discussion, which actually, nothing on our agenda, none of the items on our agenda have anything to do with a full review of the books that are in question. According to the statute, there is nothing that we can agree to or not agree to. We have a legal obligation to follow the statute. That work should continue. That work should not stop under no circumstances, until all of those pornographic, vulgar, sexually content, books with nudity, sexual context, sexual excitement, sexual battery, bestiality, and so on and so forth, are removed from our shelves. I also wanted to add that this has nothing to do with our opinions. How we believe, what we believe books should be, what we believe or have an opinion on what books students should be reading or shouldn't be reading. This has nothing to do with that. This has nothing to do with whether someone is LGBTQ, or whether there are different families, or equity. This has nothing to do with children with disabilities or ESE. This has nothing to do with that. This is statute, and we have an obligation to follow statute. I'm going to come to a close here, and I hope that you all, as we open it up to board member comments. I mention all of this so that there is a little bit of content. I really wanted to actually talk about some of the books real quick, so that I can let you know as I come to a close, that this isn't some list or some books that are just out there in the ether and somebody decided to look for them. I actually went, I didn't completely rely on the information that was sent. I went into our Folet Indian River Schools.org system and I searched, and we have several of these books currently sitting on our shelves. "The Glass Castle," and I can read the vulgar, disgusting items that are in there, but honestly, it would be against my, my faith to do so, especially in a public setting. "Out of the Darkness," that Mrs. Lavandera mentioned earlier and read excerpts from, that's on our shelves right now. "The Brave Face" is probably one of, just as disgusting as the other one, the first one that was removed already. One book called "Perfect," one book called "Looking for Alaska," another one called "Graceling." These are all books that are currently sitting on our shelves. So the work of our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction should not have stopped reviewing these books and removing them. I know we are all, we all have children. I certainly would not allow my child to read any of these. There are some parents who would, and that's okay, that's your prerogative, but it is not appropriate for a public school system. If you want your children to read these books, that's fine. That's why we have a public library system. Not a public school system or a public library. Obviously, neither do our legislatures believe that. So I'll end it with the item that I actually have as a result of all of this to respond to what has been going on. The library and media center item that I have here, and you can read the introduction, but ultimately, because of all of this, what, and after talking with Dr. Moore and realizing that we did have a policy that wasn't followed, it was a good time to actually see, or rather, charge him, and hopefully you all understand that this is, this is important. Charge him with the following items. Conduct a full review of district policies, administrative policies, and statutes appropriate to the selection of instructional materials, including library, media center books. Investigate the Folet learning system, process for recommending books to our schools. Are there any other library or media center library systems that offer the same or similar services as Folet and Renaissance, but with stricter practices on their recommendations? Investigate the processes for accelerated reader selections from Renaissance, and how we can ensure that books selected for use with AR are in alignment with relevant board policies and state statutes. Establish a process by which books in our library and media centers will be free and clear of harmful, prohibited, and obscene material congruent to Florida statute 847.012. Conduct a full evaluation of the current use of the library and media centers to increase student engagement and interaction. Provide an update on the assessment process during the full board meeting in January 2022, and then report back to the board with the findings of the assessment and related recommendations at a second board meeting in February 2022. I didn't put dates here, board members, because, you know, it was already in discussion that we might be considering changing meetings and all that other kind of stuff. And I, and my last point is, all of this was not done on my own. It was in constant communication with our superintendent and making sure that the superintendent was, was not only okay, but was in agreement, helped actually, you know, put it together with me. We worked together collaboratively on this, so there isn't anyone stepping over toes. It is a very, very important touchy subject, and it needs to be addressed. With that, Madam Chair, if we can turn it over to, for discussion, it's up to you.
First thing, I have a question to Ms. DiAgresta. So I know that the superintendent would probably like to make a statement about this. Would it be more appropriate for him to make a statement now or after we go ahead and have our discussion? I'm following procedure, I want to follow procedure correctly.
Right, it's whatever your preferences.
What would your preference be, Dr. Moore?
Hearing the board.
Okay, thank you. All right, so board members, we have an item that has been proposed by Mrs. Rosario. In short, I'm going to read, "The school board directs the superintendent to conduct a full assessment of our school libraries and media centers as outlined in the attached document." She read the document. All right, could I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Rosario, can I have a second?
Oh, second.
Dr. Jones? Okay, and now we have time for discussion. Ms. Rosario read her statement. Who would like to make a comment or have a discussion about this? Dr. Jones?
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
Just a second, you go first, and then I'll go.
In our discussion today, and it's when you were not here, I don't know if you're watching or anything, but I brought up 2520A, looking at the procedure for selection of library or media center materials with CNI Department in cooperation with the selection of all materials housed in the media center. And we have several media specialists here, so I want to recognize you. One thing also, when I looked at all the emails, again, being a high school principal, we used to have AR at the high school and the middle school. I emailed all the, my middle school and high school principals. We're not supporting that as far as money for it, and no teacher is aligning it to the department in the high schools. Middle schools, a couple of them use it, but it's not aligned to a department as far as you must read this book and this book. I know some schools used to do, just within the media center, some prizes and awards for AR books, but I know it's not used as it used to be. And that came from the principals. When I look at this, obviously with state statute, and we discussed this this afternoon, we must follow state statute, dealing with pornography, and making sure the material is age-appropriate, there's no question there. I don't know, I was just thinking about this, you know, with what we do in the district, and if you have time, look up our health education standards, and they're very, very good. You know, we have abstinence in this district, and that's what we teach. And if you look at a lot of the standards in specific areas there, it talks about, you know, teenagers making the right choice. You know, we want to be here for you to make the right choice. So obviously, we do not support any pornography whatsoever. One thing I do want to point out, under 100634, and this means a lot to me, because we have a diverse district, diverse in many ways. The consideration, 100634, number four, the consideration of the broad racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, and cultural diversity of the students of the state. So that's something we need to be aware of. You know, if we have, like Ms. Rosario said, she's not talking about LGBTQ or any issues like that, we're talking about pornography. We want to make sure that we have a diverse election for our students, our students here in the state. I think when we had this discussion today, we all talked about, you know, we, we don't want these books here dealing with pornography. Not sure of the process, how they got here. I know sometimes when we used to order books, they came in a group. And I know Dr. Moore said the beginning of this, and I know he will clear it up, is that there needs to be a process, there needs to be a policy. And I'm sure our media specialists would have some good ideas there where we want to go in our next generation of media. You know, if you've been around to our, our libraries, our media centers, a lot different than they were even five, 10 years ago with the technology. So we want to continue to build that for our students in the instructional materials that we have, our core standards and our subject areas, for support of those standards in our subject areas. But I don't think there's any question about pornography or age-appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jones. Dr. Schiff?
Yeah. I have a lot of notes about this, and I, and my notes are no longer in any kind of order. I have no problem with following state statute. Obviously, that's what we should do. That doesn't even warrant more discussion than we've had. It's obvious, it's, it's what we do. The superintendent has told us innumerable times the process that he has initiated and that he will be taking in our schools to ensure appropriate content of our books. I'm clear about that, that's what we hired him to do, that's his job. He's told us innumerable times, both in private conversations and publicly, that that's his intention, and I trust that he's going to do that. There are many books on this list that are about people and about experiences that may not replicate our own. For example, "Our Classroom is a Family" is on this list, which is a book about how we create empathetic relationships in school. Terrific, I'll keep going, it's my turn to speak now.
Hold on one second, please, nothing from the floor. It's her turn to speak, thank you.
"Water for Elephants" is on the list, which was made into a major motion picture. It's about a coming-of-age story about a young man who joins the circus. On the list is "Beloved" by Toni Morrison, which won a Pulitzer Prize in 1988. Is some of the content challenging to read? It sure is. But is it appropriate in some circumstances to talk about the lives of, and experiences of people who don't look like us or sound like us, or have the history of us, to understand what that's like, to understand that background? "The Glass Castle" is a really hard look at life and poverty. I've read these books. "The Kite Runner" offers, there is some rough content in that book, I won't deny it. But it's a sto, this is my time, not yours. There is content in that that presents a multicultural lens on a world that looks very, very different than the experience that any of us have had. I've read that book, it was a hard read, and I read it as an adult, and I'll acknowledge that. That was a hard read. There are books on this list, and I'll say some of them. This has nothing to do with pornographic content. "Black Software," "The Internet and Racial Justice," "What is the Black Lives Matter Movement," "Brave Leaders and Activists." These are some of the lists on this book, books on this list. Brave Leaders and Activists, these are some of the lists on this book, books on this list. There's a book called Blended. Here's a description of the book, and this is the exact description that was sent to us. Pro, piano prodigy Isabella, 11, whose black father and white mother struggle to share custody, never feels whole, especially as racial tensions affect her school. Her parents both become engaged, and she and her, this is my time. You sent this, you sent this description.
Dr. Schiff, hold on one second, don't engage.
Yeah.
Because we asked the public.
You're right, got it, I hear you.
Ask the public not to engage, please.
I get it.
Thank you.
And she and her stepbrother are stopped by police. That's the description of the book. So when I think about some of these books, when I think about my experience, when I think about what I would encourage my son to read, first off, if my son would read, if he would read books this deep and this intense, I'd be delighted, frankly. Is some of the content inappropriate? Is some of the content something that we would talk about as a family, as a parent, and that if he were reading this content in school, that I would hope is inside of a class discussion about how to understand this content, about how to understand lives that don't look like ours? It is also true that some citizens I am aware of have gone through these books and have noticed about fif, give or take 50% of this is LGBTQIA+. Much of it is about African-American lives. Much of this is about content that don't replicate the life I've had. But here is something about the life I've had. I am a Jewish American. I read books about the Holocaust, and it deeply pains me. I can barely get through some of it. But does that mean I shouldn't read it? Does that mean I shouldn't be exposed to it? We just came off Holocaust Awareness Week, frankly, last week. We had presentations in schools about this. Do I want our children, when I sit here as an, as someone who was not raised Christian, in a Christian community, every time we have a conversation about Christian values, that excludes me, because that presumes I don't share those values in some way, and I get it, I'm getting emotional here. But there is a presumption here that we are somehow intentionally doing something harmful in our community and to our students, and there is no intent to harm. We are here as educators, we are here as people who sat up on this dais because we took a stand, and we took a stand in favor of education and in favor of students, and we did it because we care, not because there's an intention to harm. So should we follow state statute? Of course we should, of course we should. But is there a conversation about what is appropriate content and how that content is presented? These, this is not content that's inside our curriculum. We heard that today from our superintendent in our workshop. I know that each of you has had conversations, numerous conversations, with our superintendent as often as I have, probably. I don't know that, I presume that. Because if I'm talking to him, I presume that the other four of you are talking to him as often as I do. I am confident that he is aware of the issue. I am confident that his intention is for the best interests of our students and for our community. I have no doubt about that. So do I feel like I need to say, here's what you need to do and how you need to do it, when I'm quite confident that he's already doing it? When I'm quite confident that this material is not in our curriculum, and if it is assigned in some way in a classroom, it will be assigned inside the context of a conversation about how we understand, how we have difficult conversations, what we mean to each other, and how we develop empathy for experiences that, that are not our own? So yeah, I'm a little emotional about this conversation, because I don't like the direction it's going. I don't like the direction when we start to define who can read what and who gets to say what that is. Who gets to say? Do we follow statute? Of course we do. But do you get to say what my child is allowed to read? No. Do you get to say, in the content of a classroom conversation? A school board member from another district told me a story about a parent who came to her with a book that her daughter had been assigned to read in school, and had been assigned to read, which depicted African-American women in a negative way. And the problem wasn't about the content in the book. The problem was that it was assigned over vacation, so there was no context in which to discuss it and have a conversation about critical thought and critical reading, and how do we interpret this material, and how do we support each other in understanding that our lives look different from each other, and what does that mean? So are we creating a context for that? I sure hope so. Because if our schools aren't doing that, then we're not doing the job of educating students. If we're not doing that, then that's what we look at, then that's where we go. But we don't take away things, because we pull a line, or a paragraph, or a page, out of a book that has a completely different context, and that context is important and significant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Schiff. Mr. Barefoot, would you like to comment?
Just, just briefly, first of all, I would like to thank Mrs. Rosario. Obviously, she's put in a lot of time and effort referencing statutes and, and the like, so that took a lot of work, and I think we're all the beneficiaries of it.
Thank you.
There's not, there's not a whole lot to say. I think that the bottom line is, as you've all said, we don't want anything in there that is inconsistent with statute. As you've all said, Dr. Moore is committed, and as the process is, I'm not sure that it's stopped, but perhaps it's been delayed, but he's committed to doing a proper review within the context of the statute. And I trust that when that review is complete, we'll know what the results of it are, and that's what we ought to be doing. And there's, I really have nothing else to add.
Okay, thank you. You don't have anything you want to say before I say?
I'd like to follow up, but.
Please do, go ahead.
Okay, regarding the, the books on the list, I didn't create that list. I didn't send that list to the board.
I didn't say you did.
Well, you were responding to this item, so. I was, I wanted, I wanted to follow up with that and make it clear. So with regard to all of the books on that list, I'm not the maker of them. So I just wanted to make that clear there. It's not our job to get into the weeds, as we've talked about often. Once we charge the superintendent, once this is approved, and once we charge the superintendent with this work, which he has agreed that he is, is more than willing to do, then it's up to him and his team to vet all of the books that are on all of our shelves. Somehow or another, create a system to ensure that everybody is trained appropriately, and that none of the books that violate statute, that are obscene, and so on and so forth, are available for our kids. That I think is clear. So one of the questions that you mentioned is, who gets to do that? It's up to the superintendent. You also asked a question, Dr. Schiff, what you read, or, you know, you, not a question, you stated that you read some of these books, but what you read as an adult is different than what we should allow and what we can allow children to read in schools. Those are two totally different things. And even though you might recommend the, the Glass Castle, for example, and say that it is an appropriate book, or that it has appropriate content, it's pretty interesting to me, and it's actually pretty concerning. It's not taken out of context, so I'll read a little excerpt, just to be clear. From The Glass Castle, also available right now at Vero Beach High School Library. It might be a great book for you, but it's not appropriate for our kids. Here's an excerpt. "One of the mattresses, Billy's father was snoring unevenly, his mouth hung open, and flies were gathered in the stumble of his beard. A wet stain had darkened his pants nearly to his knees. His zipper was undone, and his gross pee dangled to one side. I stared quietly, then asked, 'What's the funny thing? Don't you see?'" said Billy, pointing to his dad. "He went to the bathroom on himself, in a bad way, I'm not reading it. Billy started laughing." That's Chapter 21, page 262. Let me read another. "Mom, Uncle Stanley is behaving inappropriately," I said. "Oh, you're probably imagining it," she said. "He groped me. He's wanking off." Mom cocked her head and looked corned, concerned. "Poor Stanley," she said. "He's so lonely, but it was gross. Mom asked me if I was okay. I shrugged and nodded. 'Well, there you go,' she said. She said the sexual assault was a crime of perception. 'If you don't think you're hurt, then you aren't,' she said, Chapter 41." I, I really don't think I should continue, but grabbing at the crotch of his pants, squeezing and kneading while mumbling to herself and telling Brian he told, he, to hold still. And you all can do a public records request if you want to read it. I don't think that this is appropriate for kids, and I can't believe that you would actually say that this might be appropriate and taken out of context. This is disgusting for children. If you prefer to read it as an adult, that's up to you, but it's not appropriate for kids, and that's what we have to follow. And I understand your concern, I understand that you are emotional. I get it. So are we all. We're on the same page here. But what determines, who determines, who gets to say what the kids here in this district and in all of public schools read, is the Department of Education, the standards put forth, the rules put forth, your, your legislatures, and Board members, as we set policy. So here we are, and what we need to do right now is just charge the superintendent with this work and let it get done.
Are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I'm going to make a couple of comments. So first of all, statute's very clear. I'm not going to read the whole thing again. I just want to talk about one little piece in here, and I think that's the difference with what I just heard. It says that descriptions or narrative accounts of sexual excitement or sexual conduct that is harmful to others is written under the statute of pornography. It's very clear. So now the question is, what to do about it? We have two issues here. We have the issue of removing the books that are already in our media centers that may violate this statute. And the second issue we have is a procedure for selecting appropriate materials and the training of those procedures.
And those are all in the?
The training I didn't see in there, but I think that that is probably in the blanket for the superintendent to provide and do. So I'm fine with that. The question I asked today, Ms. Rosario, because I wanted a very clear understanding of this, because I did my homework too. Thank you for doing your homework. It allowed me to do a lot more homework this weekend, and that's fine, that's our job. But the definition of instructional materials matters here. And the reason why it matters is because we have a policy in place for if someone questions instructional material, we've already had that this year, where someone questioned HMH, and so therefore, there was a very clear policy on what to do about that, to bring it to us, and then it goes to a hearing, and a hearing officer listens to it. That is what any citizen in this county can do. They can go and ask for that. It is not a parent only that can do that, it is any taxpayer in this county. Now, the question I had was whether or not media center books fall under instructional materials. It is under the blanket of that particular statute, but it is noted as a separate item on that statute. So the question I had this afternoon was, do, does that include, is that included on our policy that every time somebody has a concern about a book, it has to go to a hearing? And I heard very, very clearly today, no. What I heard was, any person that has a question about a book can do anything else that they usually do when they have a question about a procedure or a problem in their school, and that is, they don't have to go to a hearing officer, they can go to their principal, bring up the issue if they're not happy, they just keep going until they get to the superintendent or call one of us, okay? Which is what's happening. It's appropriate. It's what's happening. So I don't think, what I heard today is, we don't have to go to the whole hearing officer thing at this point. So your item that you brought forward, I think is the way to proceed. I think that's what we need to do. There are procedures that we're supposed to have in place for selecting appropriate media materials, and now that we have seen that some of these books have appeared, and I'm not saying all the books that are in question, I'm saying some of the books that have come up and alerted my ears, I think that obviously that procedure wasn't really being followed in the past. So I know, I have talked to Dr. Moore about that, and I also want to proceed very carefully on this, because it is a fine line that we're following here. It is a fine line when we're asking for every single time a person objects to something that we're using, how is that going to be determined? What is the procedure that needs to be followed? Let's say I don't want a book, and I'm totally making this up, let's say I don't want a book that teaches kids how to say the Pledge of Allegiance, that I have a problem with that personally, and I have gone to the superintendent and said, I don't want that book in place. What, is it my right to do that? Yes, it's my right to question it. But the question is, what's the procedure then for the superintendent to follow? And that is our job. Our job is to say, we would like a procedure for something to happen when somebody questions materials. And we have a procedure for instructional materials. So now what I think we're trying to do is determine, what should the procedure be for library materials? Okay?
After you hear from the superintendent.
Yes, I think he needs to weigh in at this point.
Yeah. Part of the item, though, on one of those, is to come back with recommendations with regard to policies and what needs to be put in place. But we need to give him the chance and the time to actually do it.
I agree.
Without waiting on some of these books that need to come off immediately.
I agree, but I think that there does need to be some sort of procedure for that, and we talked about that today, because we do have a very definite and clear procedure for instructional materials, and it has been used this year. So that's the, the question about media. So, Dr. Moore, would you like to weigh in?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank Board members for, for your passion around this item, and obviously, this is a very heated and, that's probably the best way of saying it, this is, this is a overhaul, and a lack of process that was on paper but not being followed for a number of years, doesn't make it right. But what we, as we begin to do this work, and as books came in, they came off the shelves, principals were notified, we've already met with principals, we already created the process for school site reviews, as well as district reviews, the work hasn't stopped. Now, will it shift or modify as we charge ourselves or create this process moving forward? Yeah, and I will tell you, there will be recommendations for changes in policy, probably. There will be procedures that have to be created from a school site perspective. There isn't a quick fix. This is a, a long, hard look at how do you create the process at the day one to include, or ensure there are not pornographic books in our school, that we are aligned to the statute. As I read the item as it's been created, I believe this is the, a good starting point to ensure that I can give the assurances to the board as it relates to the statute and the information within the statute, that those books are not on the shelves. And that is going backwards and looking at books that were there. And, and sometimes you, you trust some companies and look what happens. I don't think there was any intent by a media specialist or a principal to intentionally put things that violate statute on shelves. But the process that, if followed and should have been followed, was implemented, we wouldn't have to worry about one specific person. It would be a, a committee that would look at to ensure that the plethora of books in the media center do in fact represent all students and are aligned to the statute. So this is a process that we will have to take a long, hard pause to create in order to ensure we are aligned to the statute, and we have a level of confidence when there are things in question, and let's be real, there are going to be questions. There are books that are on the list that will more than likely be put back on the shelves, and there are books from a father's perspective, and I think the board is in consensus here, that are in fact supersede the expectation surrounding that statute. And we could be swift and quick in, in some of those, and take a longer, harder look move, moving forward. There is a process that we have to have in place moving forward, and I think that's what Ms. Baron-Borg is referring to. And, and quite honestly, this is, every school district in the nation needs to have this, because these books are in overwhelming number of school libraries. So it is creating a process that works for the School District of Indian River County that aligns to the statute, and that is the item that Ms. Rosario has created. It's a good item, and it will be, it will serve as a catalyst for the work that lies ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Jones, go ahead, you're recognized.
Thank you. Dr. Moore, when this process begins about whether you are removing a book or not, what, who makes up that committee? What, what are we looking at here as far as who will be part of that decision?
So through the, through the chair, we have a school site committees, which will be a diverse group of, of educators, teacher leaders, media specialists, assigned administrator who will do that, that review. Once that review has been concluded, we will come together from a district perspective, which is kind of bringing the committees together in order to have a, a second look, in order to ensure that School A and School B are aligned in terms of that specific process. Ultimately, the end of the road. Ultimately, the end of the road will be through me and a recommendation to you in terms of information that's being removed. So I'm not putting this on any one specific individual. It is a multi-layer approach. That allows us to get to the point on the process that should've been followed. Then, we will have to create policy and procedures moving forward in order to ensure everyone is trained up, understands the expectations, so we continue to go forward and navigate in a very complex, difficult time, that the system is safeguarded through process.
So you said a diverse committee, and our media specialists will be involved, or how will that?
Absolutely. And we need this process to protect them. Because I, in some ways, I feel bad that there may be thoughts that these individuals are intentionally selecting this material. I don't believe that to be true. I think they're ordering from groups of books, and that information's going on there.
And then you will give that information to the board about why a book was removed, or what books were removed, and the committee decision?
I, to be frank, I think I should be able to cite the language that this in fact is, in my opinion, slash the committee's opinion, a graphic in the sense that it violates the statute. And if I can't produce that, then it doesn't meet the expectation of the item that's before you.
Right, and violating the statute, I think, is one we all agreed on, because...
I, I think the board is in consensus regarding the application or the creation of process to support books that are only aligned to the statute. And books that are pornographic in nature, as defined by the statute, shouldn't be there. It's just, we're having to go backwards, which is unfortunate, but that's just the work that we're charged to do. And this is going back 12, 13, 14 years. It's not a banning of books. It's not a wide, sweeping research and review. It's specifically tailored to that statute, which is the item.
The last comment, I wanna reiterate that 10-06-34 is they always want us to consider the broad racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic and cultural diversity of the students, not only in the state, but in our district.
Every day of the week and twice on Sunday.
Thank you.
Hey, any other board members?
Yeah.
Dr. Schiff?
I wanna clarify. So, to clarify, what I hear you saying is, there is already a policy in place, and that policy wasn't followed. Is that correct?
There was a procedure that was in place.
Procedure, sorry. There was a procedure that was in place.
So the procedure was the selection of materials. We could say with confidence, in all cases, that procedure wasn't being followed.
Okay. So we already have that, right? So what you are committing to do now is ensure that the procedure is properly followed?
Yes, but that doesn't help me, that helps me moving forward, but that doesn't help me for the last four or five years in which it wasn't followed.
Correct, no, I understand that. I understand that. The other thing I hear you saying, which we all agree on, the thing that I hear the board agrees on, is that books should align with statute.
Correct.
Simple. So I think there's a simpler way to say this. You're gonna review the procedure, and you're gonna ensure that the books in our libraries align with statute. And you're gonna bring, and you're gonna tell us how you're doing that. That's essentially the bottom line.
That's not the only work that needs to be done. So, and quite transparent, I have great concerns, I don't think we get as much out of our media centers that, as we should.
I agree.
I think they should become, the process itself needs to be feeding the experience of children in classrooms. We need to be intentional around providing content that helps the, pull kids to the standards. I don't think we're intentionally doing that. I think having the conversation at a school site level, say, "We don't have enough money to begin with in creating an innovation space or a lib, a media center. What is it that we, is the best investment to put in that space for the children in our particular school?" Which looks at the school sites improvement plan. It looks at the district strategic plan. It's having a three or four-year plan on how we're gonna redefine that space. So it's a timely item, and it's in the midst of a great deal of controversy, but that's fine. That's what we're charged to do. But at the end of the day, I would hope to bring an item back in February that says, "Not only here's what we did to fix this uncomfortable space in which we find ourselves now, but here's what we're doing two, three, and four and five years out to redefine that particular space." So this has, although we're in an uncomfortable place right now, I think at the end of this journey, we can find ourselves with redefined spaces in our schools that are serving as the heartbeat of our schools, in which all kids really, really, really wanna go to. And at the heart of it, that's not what we're currently seeing in our schools.
Okay, Ms. Rosario. Dr. Moore, I just wanna be clear, the committee that you were talking about is in regard to the charge, once this is approved, if it's approved by the board, when you go forward, the committee that's written in this procedural manual that was not followed. That's the committee you were referring to, correct?
Correct.
But that has nothing to do with the books that are currently sitting on the shelves that have content in it that is absolutely inappropriate? What is the process for these books?
Those, those, that is the immediate process for those particular books. So we have to go...
You're gonna have these books go through a committee?
Some of them will be very, very easy to do, and some of them will not be easy to do. But putting one person on the hook for doing that isn't the best way of doing this work. So you pull the books.
So you have these books on our shelves right now, and you're gonna wait for a committee to be selected?
No, 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 I'm not.
Okay.
The books, as they have come in, have been pulled in order to conduct the particular review.
They haven't, only one book has been pulled.
No.
And doctor, mister, yes, and Mr. Meyer?
So I'm responsible for the school system, and regardless of what Mr. Meyer communicated in the email, I'm telling you and everyone in the sound of my voice, as books came in, they were pulled so we can conduct the review. And I've already verified that.
Okay.
Now, some will be very, very easy, based on how uncomfortable it is to read, that, yeah, that violates the statute. Others will be conversations to say, "All right, let's look at age appropriate," some of the comments that Dr. Schiff was making. Those are gonna be hard conversations. At the end of the day, there're gonna be concerns on both sides of it. But I will give a validation to the board. There is a process that was followed. Multiple eyes have been on it. The recommendation to the school board is yes for these and no for these. And the yeses, we have a, giving you a level of assurances that that does align to statute.
Okay. Board members, any other discussion?
Yeah, sorry, one other thing. I would request that in the future, if a board member makes a request about an item, an issue that is likely to come to the board and has communication with district staff, that all board members be made aware of that. When I am unaware of some of that communication that's happened, and it's happened only individually with one board member, that puts me at a disadvantage, 'cause I don't know that communication. Mrs. Rosario cited communication she had with Mr. Meyer, that if it didn't come to all of us, leaves the rest of us unaware and at a disadvantage. So I'd like there to be a process that we can all have equal information. Generally, we do. In this case, we did not.
So on, let me respond, so as soon as the item was co-crafted, I emailed that to the board. I provide my staff to this board to facilitate answers to your questions. That is the right thing to do, from my perspective as a superintendent. If you have questions or concerns, and no one ever excludes me, the opposite side of that is to filter all the information through me, which takes additional time. It's not the way that we wanna do. So I don't want to tell school board members, "You don't have access to my staff." I wanna continue to have access to my staff. Mr. Meyer has bent over backwards in order to do this. He is leading from a solid point and has a father's perspective in his acting in ethical way, and not trying to excuse away anything, and leading this specific work. And there's still work to be done. But I don't wanna remove access from my staff.
It's not at all what I'm suggesting. To the contrary, actually.
Let me make one point, okay, if I could. So just for clarification, when you're talking about this current list of concerns, it's not just Mr. Meyer that's going to be making this decision?
No, no.
Okay, please state that, because that has been out there, so I wanna make sure people understand.
No, I think we've communicated that it's a multi-layer committee approach.
For even for the emergency items?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Rosario?
I just, I'm just gonna piggyback off of what Dr. Schiff just mentioned right now. I've had these concerns myself. I pulled up the policy on board communication. Board communication, we should be receiving all of the communication. If staff is communicating, especially with regard to an item that is coming before us, all board members are supposed to be copied on that, on those communications. One-on-one communication, not so much, because it's, you know, your individual question or something like that. But we have policy to support that, and that's not being followed. That has not been the case for quite a while. And I have had conversations with Dr. Moore on this same thing. Maybe at our next meeting, we should bring forth that policy and take a look at it and have a discussion at our next discussion session or something. But I do agree with you on that.
I agree too.
Okay. No other discussion? This has been a very long discussion, but I think an important discussion for us to take place in a public setting with all people that are concerned about this issue, having the opportunity to see how we feel about this and how concerned we are as well, that the statute needs to be followed. So at this point, then, I'm gonna call for the vote. We have a motion on the, on the dais about the school board directs the superintendent to conduct a full assessment of our school libraries and media centers, as outlined in the attached document that Ms. Rosario read earlier. Mrs. Rosario made the motion, Dr. Jones seconded it. Could I get a vote? If you're in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, this passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Rosario.
Thank you. Thank you, board members.
Okay. So I'd like to recognize Dr. Moore for superintendent's report.
Through the chair, I gave my report during the initial information. As next week, the children and our teachers will be off for Thanksgiving, just a level of sharing my thanks to my immediate team, cabinet, for all of your hard work and commitment and continuing to push. Just thankful for the opportunity to be here and serve in the school district, and I hope everyone enjoys a very relaxing week off next week.
Hey, thank you. All right, we didn't have any discussion items. We had a long discussion item, but it was not a separate discussion item. A school board member matters. Would anyone like to go first? Dr. Jones? Hold on one second.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dr. Jones.
Dr. Moore, thank you for that first quarter update, very informational. Just double checking, shouldn't we get our graduation rate pretty soon?
Through the chair, we anticipate celebrating our graduation month rate next month.
I thought it was usually December. And just to follow up on what you said about, I was here at the office one day, and you had data com, and I came in and just listened a little bit to elementary and secondary principals. And, you know, you were grilling them pretty hard, and they responded well. And the one thing I really did notice at the end is, what can we do for you? And I want you to keep that message out there, because I think you ask any principal or teacher, this, as you said, very tough year, just a very tough year. And not only, what can you do to help our schools, help our principals, our teachers, our support staff, everyone? You know, what can we do to make sure that you are keeping focused on teaching and learning? Because that is the key to our success. We have to talk about our students and their achievement. I had a really wonderful night. Ms. Rosario there is at Sebastian River High School for senior night for football. They had skydivers, band cheerleaders, senior night, and it was really cool. Coach Perry's sister was a surprise visitor. She is in the Army in DC in a very high-ranking position. I was standing next to him when she was announced to sing the Star Spangled Banner, and it was absolutely a wonderful event. Vera plays Friday at Palm Beach Central in Wellington, second round of the playoffs, so good luck. I had the pleasure of meeting with Moonshot the Puppet with my tea for thankful, with the interaction with Moonshot, and it was a great experience. You know, we are celebrating MCAN December 9th here with our leaders in the community to continue our journey with early learning and resources and getting our students ready for kindergarten. We're starting at birth, getting them ready for kindergarten, and making sure that they are ready to go as they all enter the school year. And again, another thank you for the, that PSA for the bus safety was excellent, and I think we really got some strong messages across, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jones. Who would like to go next? I'll go next. Ms. Rosario?
I just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I know that it's been pretty tough, you know, the year. It's been a pretty tough year, but as we move into this first week off, I really do wish that everyone has a very restful week, a great week with family and friends, and eat well.
Yeah. But not too much.
Eat as much as you want.
Dr. Schiff?
Most of the things we've already cited, the art gallery, congratulations to our principal of the year and assistant principal of the year, the bus PSA, you know, many of those things have already been mentioned, so happy Thanksgiving, enjoy the time.
Okay, hold on. Mr. Barefoot?
Well, I just wanna, I wanna recognize you, Mrs. Berenberg, for all the work you did with the Executive Roundtable, the golf tournament.
Oh, that was fun.
Yeah, that's right.
It was very successful, and I'd also like to point out that the team of Moore, Acid Barefoot, finished ahead of the team of Berenberg, Berenberg, Borg, and whomever.
Yeah, but we got a place and you didn't, so just saying.
What did you get? Yeah.
I got, I got a dozen golf balls, so...
Oh, yeah, because you were on the tournament committee, that's why.
No.
Let's just remember, so the gauntlets down for next year.
There you go.
There you go. Okay, I heard you. I heard you. I was watching the board. You kept moving up.
We stayed ahead of, we stayed ahead of that team for the whole way.
Well, we did have a handicap. My husband played.
I'm sure he'll appreciate hearing that after he's been under siege up in Tallahassee.
Yeah, he hasn't picked up a golf club in a long time, so I did have that out for him. Are you done with all the things that you'd like to say?
Would you like me to continue? We could do it hole by hole if you'd like.
No.
I'm finished.
Okay, Ms. Rosario?
I had something I just wanted to say. Thank you, Suzanne. One last time. This is your...
I'll be here the 29th.
I'll be here the 29th.
Oh, you'll be, okay.
Okay, so just so you know, that I think the number that we were able to take in from the Executive Roundtable golf tournament, I don't think it's the final number because of expenses, but it was about $12,000, which is really nice to be able to do, to help support a group that supports us in many ways. So we appreciate that. The art gallery was wonderful. The PSA was more than I had envisioned bringing that item up, so I really appreciate that. And thank you, board members, for doing that. I don't know if you had as many bloopers as I did. I think we took my first take, though, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And you made me keep going, even though that one was fine, and I got worse. All right. And so I just wanted to say that, you know, I served, one of the items that we didn't bring up for a vote, because it wasn't one that comes up for a vote, but it's the Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments, and I'm now chair of that for this next coming year. One of the things that I get to do as chair is to choose someone to come and speak to the group. And it's interesting, because it's a group that is made up of a representative from different municipalities and school boards from four different counties. So you've got Okeechobee people come driving over, and they have a wonderful barbecue, I understand, in June, and I didn't get to attend. But, and they have a wonderful December Christmas luncheon that I won't get to attend, because we'll be at FSBA. However, when you have those four groups together, they, there's some power there. And the power is in getting together for initiatives or problems that face us all. So one of the first things I thought of to bring forward to that group was the issue of vaping. And how important it is to perhaps push our legislatures and legislators into understanding the dangers for our kids in the flavors and things like that. So I do have that group coming to speak, so you all are more than welcome, obviously, at those meetings, or to attend by teams. They do both. And also, I'm looking for other suggestions for people that can come help us be powerful for that group. I don't want it to be just about Indian River initiatives, because it was four counties. I want it to be about something that goes across the counties. I did reach out to a couple of groups here that also have organizational support in those other counties, and one being United Against Poverty, another one being Healthy Start, Treasure Coast Community Health, and the license plate thing that we do. So if you think of something else, if you would get that information, maybe to Dr. Moore, and I'd appreciate that. So if there's another group that you think could help with their awareness of what they do for us, I'd appreciate that.
Will you send us those dates and meetings? Will you send us those dates and meetings time?
Yes, they are the first Wednesday of every month at 10 o'clock in St. Lucie County's chambers, okay? I'm sorry? Okay, and I'd just like to say, we miss Nancy Esplin, and we appreciate Ms. Poizelle and your team that helped you today, we appreciate that very much. And, Dr. Moore, there is something that came up tonight that I want to address, and that is putting the camera on speakers. And the reason why I think it's important to do so is because, as you noticed tonight, anybody now has a cellphone that can take a video, can edit it any of the way they want. I think it's important for us to have the actual footage, and also for people to maybe perhaps give their address so that we know whether or not they live in our county.
We used to do that all the time.
Yeah, I know all the, all the other organizations do that in town, and the only reason why they do it, I think, is so people are aware if that's a group that's coming in from out of county or in the county.
We did that all the time.
I just read, literally, when I was reading the open meetings manual, the Open Meetings Act, I just read somewhere in there that said that there was a time where people would give their address, but that is no longer required.
If you could get that information, if it's a statute, give it to Dr. Moore.
Suzanne?
But I really think it's important that we do that.
I sent you the entire manual, but I don't think I sent you the part that says you can't give the address. I think some of the things that are, one of the reasons why, of course, I see Suzanne brought the microphone closer, is because some people might have exemptions, and I think that has a lot to do with why that may have changed, but...
Go ahead, Suzanne.
There are several public hearings that must be held by a municipality or a county commission when they're doing a land use change. And in order to have appropriate evidence during those public hearings, the individuals who are testifying must give their address so that the commission can make a determination that their testimony is relevant, that they live in the area, they live in the county, that they're being impacted by whatever the change is being proposed. So for those types of hearings, it is necessary for someone to provide their residential address or their business address that makes them relevant to the testimony that they're providing. But with regard to someone who wishes to come forward and talk to you about a school bus stop, or wishes to talk to you about something else relevant to the school board, many times, their, their physical address isn't necessary because it doesn't have anything to do with the issue they're coming to talk to you about. I think it just, in my experience, the only time that it may be relevant, and it's a may, I'm not saying it would be, is if the school board were going through a redistricting of your school attendance boundaries, and someone was coming to give testimony regarding how it impacts them or not, then you would need to have some evidence from them that they actually live in that area. So that may be relevant, I'm not saying it's the only way to figure it out, but that would be some relevant testimony to provide at a public hearing. But in many circumstances, someone's address is not relevant to coming forward with public comment. It became very commonplace for everyone, school boards, municipalities, counties, for everyone just to say, you know, provide your name and your address. It was just to have a record of where these folks were coming from, just to kind of connect it to the relevance of the topic that they were discussing.
Okay, however...
Food for thought. I would actually support the cameras, I supported it before, I didn't think it was a good idea that we removed the cameras from citizens for the same exact reason. But now, they can do it, so you're right, we need to have those cameras on there before we have an issue.
Okay, and with that, we'll have superintendent's closing.
Just remember, Friday, we will be celebrating the district support staff here, 12 to 2. We need all of our board members here, you're going to be judges for a number of different competitions that we have going on, from best cabinet theme, we have theme, we had food cook-off, so we need you, we need, I need your vote.
Dr. Moore, I apologize, but I will be out of town. I have a family emergency. With that, having here just that need for your vote, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 9:14. Thank you, board members.